Senior Manager of Infrastructure Planning with the District. And I have with me Michael Levin, a professional engineer and project manager with WSP, the engineering consultant that has assisted the district with preparation of the Water Master Plan. Also joining online is Ian Moran, a process designer with WSP, who is involved in the water rate study and he'll be available to answer any questions on that portion. Also with me are staff from Finance and Public Works Department, if there's any questions for them. So the objectives of today's presentation are to seek council approval of the Water Master Plan update and seeking endorsement of a single tier water rate structure and directing staff to complete further work in order to bring forward new water rates in a future fees and charges bylaw. So a quick overview on the water utility. It's comprised of one hundred and forty-six kilometers of water mains, of which thirty-two percent are asbestos cement pipes that are nearing the end of their design life. We have quite a complex water system, given our topography made up of reservoirs, wells, pump stations, we have fifteen different pressure zones, many pressure reducing valves, close to nine thousand service connections to our customers, six hundred and fifty fire hydrants and two surface water sources. Our last Water Master Plan was in twenty fifteen and there have been some pretty significant changes since. Since that, including our population has increased by forty-five percent from just over twenty thousand in twenty fifteen to over twenty-nine thousand in twenty twenty-three. We've adopted a new official community plan and we have new growth projections looking into the future. Provinces passed Bill forty-four allowing for a small-scale multi-unit housing within historically single-family residential zoned neighborhoods. And we've completed a council-endorsed metering program, which opens up some opportunities for us. So when we were scoping the Water Master Plan, we looked at some of the main issues and challenges that were facing the water utility, which includes significant growth, very high summer water consumption, which nearly doubles from winter to summer. We're approaching our licensed groundwater capacity. We have an aging system and we have an older water rate structure. And so that led us to questions of what capacity upgrades are required to accommodate ongoing growth? How we should prioritize our system renewal? How can we reduce our consumption and defer capital upgrades? What are the overall capital requirements for the water utility? And how can we sustainably fund it? That. So the scope of work for the Water Master Plan fell into six main components, which are a long-term water supply strategy, an AC, or that's asbestos cement water main renewal strategy, a water conservation strategy, a capacity analysis that includes consideration of Bill forty-four, preparing an updated capital plan that brings all of those components together, and a water rate study that looks at how do we fund, fund all of those upgrades as well as transitioning to a water rate structure that charges customers based on their actual water usage. So jumping right into that first component, our long-term water supply strategy. The community's main water source is Powerhouse Springs Well Field, located in the Ring Creek Aquifer. This provides a hundred percent of the district's current water supply. We also have two surface water supplies on Mashur Creek and Stowamas Creek that are available for emergency circumstances. We're licensed to extract up to two hundred and fifty-five liters a second at Powerhouse Springs, one hundred and eighty-four liters a second from Mashur Creek and one hundred and thirty-two liters a second from Stowamas Creek. Based on current conditions, our average daily demand is one hundred and fifty-six liters per second. And that has spiked to as high as two hundred and forty-five liters per second in the summer during hot and dry periods, when there's significant outdoor water use. So based on those current projections, it's predicted that the district will reach our current licensed limit at Powerhouse Springs Well Field in twenty twenty-six. Considerations for the long-term water supply strategy included that we're rapidly approaching our licensed capacity and that's again expected to occur in twenty twenty-six. There's also benefit to building water supply redundancy and having more than a single source of water currently using Stowamas or Mashur Creek could result in a water quality or boil water advisory. So they are available, but there would be impacts that are undesirable if they were used. And finally, there is some risk associated with our existing transmission main that transports water from the Powerhouse Springs Well Field to the community. And that includes river crossings and potential vulnerability during seismic events. So in order to assess long-term water supply options, a groundwater assessment was completed first that looked at all potential groundwater sources. The lower Mamcom Aquifer was identified as a potential future water source, although it was recognized that further investigation would be required to confirm its suitability, both in terms of water quality and water quantity. From there, we completed a comprehensive options analysis that looked at all potential water sources. Three options were shortlisted, which included adding new wells at Powerhouse Springs, adding treatment to the Stowamas River surface water source, or building a new well field in the lower Mamcom Aquifer. We looked at that from a lifecycle cost perspective, which showed that adding new wells to Powerhouse Springs was the lowest cost option at four point four million dollars lifecycle cost. That's over the analysis period for this Water Master Plan, which extends to twenty forty-one. So it's a seventeen-year lifecycle cost analysis. That was followed closely by adding treatment at Stowamas at a lifecycle cost of five point eight million. And the most costly option was adding a new well field to the lower Mamcom Aquifer, significantly more costly at a lifecycle cost of seventeen point eight million dollars. From a risk and redundancy standpoint, having a hundred percent reliance on Powerhouse Springs does present a potential risk. And so there are benefits to expanding on our potential water sources. So based on these considerations, the long-term water supply strategy prepared a comprehensive set of recommendations. The first is to pursue an expansion to the licensed capacity of Powerhouse Springs to address our near-term approaching of that limit. To continue with our ongoing well rehabilitation program, which is required to maintain the capacity of our existing wells. Building a new well at Powerhouse Springs, regardless of what our long-term option, that's going to be required in the short term to accommodate growth over the next ten to fifteen years. To implement a water conservation plan that I'll speak to in more detail shortly, to manage our water consumption and defer costly water supply expansion. It's recommended to conduct an assessment of Powerhouse Springs in order to determine the long-term available capacity of the source and any permitting constraints. So this will inform our longer-term water supply strategy. And also construct, recommended to construct a new section of transmission main north of Powerhouse Springs in order to abandon a, an existing high-risk river crossing. In the midterm, it's recommended to assess our major water supply line from Powerhouse Springs in relation to seismic flood and wind event susceptibility. Also recommended to conduct a feasibility study to guide future investments on the Stowamas River. And so that primarily includes determining the flow availability in the river with consideration to climate change, fisheries, flow requirements and seismic resiliency. And that would guide future investments and potentially adding treatment to that surface water source. And to pursue a filtration exclusion for the Stowamas River in order to reduce costs. The intent would be that the Stowamas River would be used during emergency or high-use periods only. And so seeking to only add UV treatment rather than filtration and UV treatment in order to, to reduce the cost quite significantly, both in terms of capital and operating costs. In the long term, so pending the results of, of the two studies, one is assessing the long-term capacity of Powerhouse Springs and the other is assessing the feasibility of Stowamas River. Based on the results of those, it is recommended to pursue either additional wells to Powerhouse Springs or adding treatment to Stowamas. But we need to complete some further study before knowing exactly which route we'll go. The capital cost of this program, which assumes that we would receive the filtration exclusion, is three point four million dollars. And all of those costs are eligible for developer cost charge or DCC funding. Moving into the AC water main renewal strategy. The district's original water system was constructed largely with asbestos cement pipes in the nineteen sixties and seventies. That those pipes have a sixty-year design life. So we are approaching the end of the design life within the next twenty years for, for the majority of the remaining pipes. And the total cost to replace all of those pipes is estimated at sixty-seven million dollars in, in twenty twenty-four dollars. We have made considerable progress over the past decade or more. In twenty eleven, forty-six percent of our overall water system was comprised of asbestos cement pipes. And in twenty twenty-two, that was down to thirty-two percent. So based on the significant costs, we completed a risk assessment in order to assess the priority of what pipes get replaced first and also to evaluate potentially deferring some of those in order to smooth out the costs and reduce pressure, financial pressure on the water utility. So that risk assessment looks at the probability of failure and the consequence of failure for each pipe within the system. Probability of failure considers factors like the pressure that the water system is, is under at that location, the age of the pipe and the soil conditions. And the consequence looks at the impacts to the number of people who would be impacted by a pipe failure. So risk rating was generated for all pipes, asbestos cement pipes within the system. And based on that analysis, the recommendation is to defer low replacement of low and medium risk mains. So low risk means it's recommended to defer their replacement by up to ten years. So revising their service life to seventy years. For medium risk pipes to defer by five years to sixty-five years and for high risk to replace them by the end of their design life. So this results in a total program cost of sixty-seven million dollars. It amounts to an average annual cost of two point six million dollars over the next fifteen years. And then, and then beyond that as well. And currently, our existing financial plan has an average investment of one point eight million dollars per year for water main replacements. So moving to this program would require an increase of about eight hundred thousand dollars per year into asbestos cement pipe replacement. So shifting focus into the water conservation plan. Background is that during the last Water Master Plan, a water conservation plan was created that targeted a fifteen percent reduction in per capita use by twenty thirty-one. And some great news is that that goal has already been exceeded. So between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-three, our per capita consumption decreased by sixteen percent. So in twenty fifteen, the average consumer over the course of the year used five hundred and forty-three liters per person per day. And in twenty twenty-three, that was reduced down to four hundred and fifty-seven liters per, per capita per day. A significant factor of this, we estimate, is due to higher density housing and multifamily housing that has low or no outdoor water usage, which is a significant factor. And also that our system has not expanded proportionally to our, our population. So we have less water loss, our, our system hasn't expanded that much. So there's not, we're not adding new pipes that, that can leak. So the goal of the new water conservation plan is to reduce our per capita consumption by twenty percent by twenty forty-one. And that is critical for deferring costly upgrades to our, our water system. The way that we recommend to do that is to implement these seven recommendations. The first is that through our subdivision and development control bylaw, to mandate that water meters be installed for all new developments as well as significant redevelopment. So there's details that need to be worked out there, but essentially a renovation of a certain value that could trigger the need for the addition of a water meter. Second is to use metering data in order to target leak detection and repairs to those leaks and to implement the AC water main renewal plan. We know that those pipes are older and tend to have higher rates of leakage. So through implementation of that AC water main replacement plan, we do expect to reduce water loss. It's recommended to revise and strengthen our outdoor water use bylaw and enforcement of that bylaw in order to reduce our outdoor water consumption, which is a significant driver and placing pressure on our, our water supply capacity. It's recommended to implement a new water rate structure to begin charging customers based on their consumption rather than the current flat fee that they currently pay. To enhance public education and community outreach, to foster long-term conservation awareness, to incorporate municipal policy for low water demand landscaping and offer incentives for water-efficient landscaping. And finally, to target water savings through high-consuming sectors through audits and education. So in order to determine system capacity upgrades, capacity analysis was undertaken. This involved updating the district's water model with system upgrades, new developments, and also developing future growth scenarios. We have targeted a high-growth scenario in order to avoid underestimating infrastructure demands. So that included a four percent growth estimate, which we do consider to be on the high range of, of what could be expected. Based on the, the growth and capacity analysis, it was determined that four kilometers of water main upgrades would be required in order to provide adequate flows for fire protection. A new reservoir is recommended by twenty forty. This is dependent somewhat on actual growth rate, but approximately twenty forty in the Garibaldi Highlands. And water supply upgrades are required, as I previously discussed. The total cost of that program is approximately eleven million dollars and all of those costs are eligible for DCC funding. We also completed a Bill forty-four impact assessment. So as I mentioned, Bill forty-four allows small-scale multi-unit housing in areas previously zoned for single-family residential. The primary impact of Bill forty-four is not the additional domestic demands from that development, but rather that it changes the fire flow requirement. So single-family neighborhoods, according to design guidelines, require sixty liters per second for fire protection, whereas multifamily housing requires ninety liters a second. So there's a, a step jump essentially to providing fire protection for multifamily housing. So that was assessed and analyzed, what is the impact of increasing fire flow from sixty to ninety liters a second in our residential neighborhoods? And it was determined that approximately one point seven kilometers of pipe upgrade would be required at a cost of close to three million dollars. But the approach that's recommended in the Water Master Plan is that because the uptake of small-scale multi-unit housing is not well-understood, it's not recommended that we proactively proceed with those upgrades, but rather to take a detailed approach so that when a development application comes in, that they hire a code consultant who completes what's called a fire underwriters survey. And they look at incorporating design measures to reduce, through a detailed assessment, to reduce the fire flow requirement. And the approach is that we determine if our existing capacity is able to provide adequate fire flows for that development. If yes, they proceed. If no, then an upgrade would be required prior to the development proceeding. And so with this approach, we avoid costs to the water utility and also avoid potentially completing upgrades that would otherwise not be required. So bringing together all of these various components, the water supply upgrades come in at a cost of three point four million dollars, which are all DCC eligible. AC water main replacement comes in at a cost between twenty twenty-five and twenty forty of forty-four million dollars, which would need to all be funded through the water utility or potentially through grant funding. The capacity upgrades result in eleven million dollars, all of which are DCC eligible. Completing unfinished projects from the last Water Master Plan is three point six million dollars, with a range of some funded by water utility and some funded through DCCs. And then the Bill forty-four upgrades of three million dollars, which are either developer-funded or not required at all. So the total cost of the program between twenty twenty-five and twenty forty is just under sixty-five million dollars. So with those costs in hand, we were able to complete a water rate study in, in order to determine what, what water rates need to be in order to fund, fund all of those costs. Our current water rate structure is very complex. It's been in place for decades. Charges users a flat rate based on their anticipated consumption. So there's a snapshot here to showing that we charge users based on their business type. So barber shops or dentists and number of chairs. So it's, it's a predictive approach and not based on actual consumption. In twenty fifteen, just for some background, council endorsed installation of water meters on all industrial, commercial and institutional properties as well as multifamily. And in twenty twenty-three, council had a slight amendment to that strategy in order to defer high-cost installations. So generally where the cost was greater than ten thousand dollars per unit for a water meter. So that resulted in about fifty properties being deferred from having their meters installed. So that metering program was completed this year, which now allows us to change our water rate structure and begin charging customers based on their consumption. So without going into too much detail, a financial model was used that looked at historic and projected growth information, historic and projected costs of the water utility, including the full cost to implement the Water Master Plan, as well as revenues, both historic and projected. And it outputs the key parameters, which are what water rates do we need to, to charge metered customers and un-metered customers in order to provide for full cost recovery of our water utility? So we looked at different rate structure options. There are nearly endless various ways that utilities can charge their customers. Flat rate, which is how we, we currently charge, single tier, multi-tier, so inclining block or deep-clining block, which I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about. Charging different rates by season or different rates for different types of customers. A lot of different municipalities have, have unique and kind of customized ways of, of charging their customers. We analyze single tier and multi-rate, multi-tier rate structures. So single tier means that customers pay the same unit rate for water regardless of how much they consume. And a multi-tier structure allows for charging different unit rates as consumption changes. So for instance, an inclining block is how BC Hydro charges customers for power. The higher power volume or amount of power that's consumed, the higher rate is charged. So we looked at the benefits and drawbacks of a, a single tier versus a multi-tier rate structure. For a single tier, the benefits are that all customers pay the same amount for the water that they consume. It's also a simple initial setup and there's lower risk for initial implementation due to the current lack of long-term consumption data. Generally, it's considered simpler to set up and monitor to ensure that the district is setting appropriate rates to collect the required revenues that we need for full cost recovery. The main drawback is that it's considered less effective from a water conservation perspective. With that said, moving from the current flat rate to a consumption-based rate structure is expected to reduce water consumption. For multi-tiered rate structure, the main benefit is that it incentivizes customers to use less water, which can lead to delaying capital upgrades. The drawbacks are that it's more challenging to determine appropriate rates at each step and to adjust those rates. And it also charges higher consuming customers like schools, hospitals, and some types of businesses higher rates for the water that they consume, which could be considered less equitable. So at this time, due to the risk and lack of long-term data, it's recommended that we start with a single-tier rate structure, develop experience and data and potentially consider a move to a multi-tiered rate structure in, in the future when the district has more data available. So at this point, council isn't being asked to approve actual rates. There is still a significant amount of work that's required to, prior to bringing forward a, a new rate structure as part of a, a future fees and charges bylaw update. Some of the work that we need to do is to input the rate structure into our billing software and set up customer accounts to analyze utility bills based on that new rate structure to ensure that we are collecting sufficient revenues as the, the financial model predicts, to make sure that essentially we're collecting revenue as expected and that there's nothing, nothing unexpected in terms of very high charges to specific customers or anything of that nature. It's recommended to move forward with shadow billing, where metered customers will be able to view what they would pay under the new water rate structure. It provides them an opportunity to adjust their consumption habits before being charged on a consumption-based system to conduct public engagement during that shadow billing process, including engaging with strata properties that have many customers. And now they're going to be issued a single bill for the entire property and, and need to distribute that bill amongst their various customers. So there will be some potential challenges with that. And we'd like to engage with those customers to ensure that we're ahead of any potential issues. And then when all of that work is complete, only then to bring forward new, a new rate structure as part of a, a fees and charges bylaw. So at this point, without being too committal, we're targeting that fees and charges bylaw to come forward in twenty twenty-five for potential implementation of new rates beginning in twenty twenty-six. And that is subject to being able to complete all of these steps listed here. So based on the results of the Water Master Plan, we consider there have been numerous successful outcomes, including developing a cost-effective long-term water supply strategy that provides us with redundancy and reliability with ongoing growth. We've deferring the replacement of low and medium-risk asbestos cement mains through a detailed risk assessment, establishing a water conservation plan that establishes priorities and allows us to defer system upgrades. We've determined what capacity upgrades are required in order to address existing deficiencies and accommodate ongoing growth. And we've developed a new water rate structure that allows for the implementation of the full cost of this Water Master Plan at approximately five percent annual rate increases. And with that, the recommendations are to approve the Water Master Plan and direct staff to begin implementation of the recommendations and to endorse a single-tier water rate structure and direct staff to complete further work so that we can bring forward a fees and charges bylaw update in the future. And I will hand it over for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Heford.
Thank you. I was curious around the, the surface source, the Stow, Stowamas versus the Mashur, given we have the two. And there's just more, it's reflecting there's more activity above the Stowamas than there is behind the Mashur. And I, I just wondered how, like what criteria was used to select that? And just even going to the rationale of like sort of prioritizing that as the, as the source versus the other. And I'm sure there's pros and cons of both, but I was just surprised by that, given the activity we see in that, in that watershed and the difference between the two.
Through the chair, the Stowamas has benefits over the Mashur, including less susceptibility to turbidity events. So during heavy rainfall, the Mashur is more subject to high turbidity, which impacts water treatment and the attractiveness of, of water. So Stowamas is, is a more stable, consistent water source from that perspective. That's the main benefit of proceeding with, with treatment on the Stowamas.
Okay, thank you. That makes, that makes sense. And I was wondering what sort of land use assumptions were being made here? And I'm, I'm assuming there's, you know, involvement from all, from all departments, but particularly the Chikai. And I'm thinking about delivery water to, potentially to, to the air, to the airport or, or points beyond. And it just, that sort of piece wasn't flushed out. So how do you see sort of any expansions required maybe more broadly to be accounted for in something like, something like this? If there's, I'm sure there's things we haven't considered quite yet.
Through the chair, the project team worked with the planning and economic development departments to develop our future growth rate or growth assumptions. So that was broken down by essentially catchments within the community. So we looked at what we know now in terms of potential growth and made conservative assumptions in terms of what the growth and employment projections could occur within each of those zones. So there, there are growth assumptions for Chikai. I, I couldn't tell you on the spot exactly what those are, but based on But based on the information that we have as of 2024, we've made the most educated assumptions that we could. And generally, they are quite conservative and considered a much longer range than 2041, which is what the the date listed is within our master plan.
Okay, and just one more, if I could, the, yeah, I noticed areas that are and like, say, the, we know there's a subarea planning process underway for Crumpet North. And it's, you know, inside growth management boundary understudy, but it's not accounted for here as far as the in-ground, but I suppose that responsibility would go to the developer at the time. But those numbers overall of something like that have been incorporated into the model just as overall growth of the community is, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. Is that roughly how that, how you've been addressing this?
Yeah, that that is correct. So while growth assumptions for using that as an example would have been built into the model, but then determining the specific onsite or extension of our water system that would be determined at the time that a development application is actually submitted. So we're looking at growth assumptions from a broader perspective. Given the unknowns, we don't go into the great detail on specific development applications. So we're we're looking at it from a higher overall water supply perspective.
Sorry, I said I had one more, but I actually have a follow-up for that one, if that's okay. The, I guess the, that leads me to, you know, one of the benefits of having compact, you know, community and not extending our services, we're not bringing on more to maintain. And as you pointed out, more to leak and and more variables. So you're using the the population number as a as a baseline, but are you making assumptions around in any of this about maintaining that infrastructure that's not reflected in the onsite? And, you know, like, how are you reconciling that? Because it's just kind of a, that piece is, like, as you said, unknown and run for good reason. But how are you accounting for that? Or how often do we have to refer to this every time we take on a kilometer of new water mains? Or or something like that?
Thanks for the question. It's a good question. We haven't accounted for extensions of our water system to service future development in terms of just the detailed considerations of things like water leakage or future operations costs. There are unknowns to that. And so we do regularly update our master plans, sort of on a five-year cycle for something like the Water Master Plan. And so having those frequent, more frequent touchpoints allows us to adjust as we go without, you know, too long of a time period.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. Following up Mayor Herford's question around Mashur versus Swamis, we saw costing for the Swamis to be upgraded. Was a similar costing exercise done for the Mashur?
Through the chair, no, it wasn't. It wasn't determined as one of the shortlisted options that we then went into further analysis on.
Okay, mostly just curious there to know if those numbers were available. And and I hear the argument around turbidity. I recall when the Mashur came online, that there was a noticeable difference when that system kicked in. I'm also interested, and this this may have been in the information from WSP, I'm not finding it quickly. There's a reference to abandon the river crossing for the line that comes out of Powerhouse Springs. So I believe that's a reference to the pipeline that goes over the Mancom and the Blue Cage. Getting a nod there. So yes. And the the use of the word abandon is probably pretty strategic because we still have to cross the Mancom with it somewhere, right? So i- is there a strategy for where specifically that would, that pipe would be moved to?
Through the chair, currently from Powerhouse Springs, water crosses over the bridge on the Powerhouse Springs Service Road and then crosses back again. And so by building a section of water main from Powerhouse Springs directly to the north, we're actually abandoned, able to completely abandon one of those river crossings. We still do need to supply water to the southern portion of the community. So the water main that crosses over the the bridge on the Powerhouse Springs Road would would still need to remain. But we are able to abandon a pretty high-risk section of pipe where we have had issues in in recent history.
That context is really helpful because I didn't catch that in any of the diagrams or the explanations in the report. Thank you for that.
Thanks. I have Counselor Petengill.
Yeah, thanks. I got a bunch of little ones, so just cut me off when I need to take a pause. Do we have a rough timeline for sort of an end date for all, all homes having water meters?
Through the chair, presently, we have no plans to move to a universal water metering system. That was analyzed. It was determined that in order to do that, it would require an increase of about 20% for all water utility users in order to fund that. So the approach is more opportunistic at this point to require that all, that we do expand our metering system, but that it's through new development as opposed to a district-led capital program. So at this point, there is no proposal to move to a universal water metering system.
I'm sorry, Jesse, little question, manager. Also, I'm sorry, just want to add that when we replace water lines, we also, so also district-led projects, we put in water meter boxes so that we can add water meters in the future. That makes sense. So again, opportunistic, but it's not just development, it's also capital works.
Okay, I may have misunderstood. I sort of understood that was sort of in the near term, the approach. But my thought or my understanding was that for folks in pre-existing development, the rates would be adjusted over time. So there's an incentive to switch over to buy into water meters. So over time, the thought would be everyone would end up on water meters. But it sounds like that's not the sort of end goal after, say, 20 years or something.
Through the chair, the the plan that is proposed is to amend our subdivision bylaw to require all new development or significant redevelopments to add meters. But if if a new development or redevelopment doesn't occur for a property, that they would remain un-metered. So there's no separate program to to go back and and retrofit meters into existing properties or existing single-family residential properties. Those are the primary customers who would remain un-metered under our current program.
So then I I shouldn't imagine that there'll be a point, say, 10 years from now, where I sort of look at my water bill and say, like, ooh, jeez, I I think it's time for me to invest my own meter.
Through the chair, it's possible to to have a voluntary program where customers can install a meter at their own cost and then to begin and to be shifted over into a new water rate structure. But there's nothing mandating at this point for those customers to to add a meter.
Okay, I may come back to that and maybe at a future meeting. But I think there is, you know, the the idea of getting people conserving and so on. Intuitively anyways, having some sort of incentive to monitor and really reduce your water seems valuable. And I think meters are a key part of that, but I'll leave that for now. What assumptions were made in terms of servicing reserves? And I'm thinking especially in light of Squamish Nation's stated goal to bring their membership home. And I presume a significant portion of that membership would come to reserves. And some of those aren't right in the heart of Squamish. And so was that sort of considered or are the numbers significant enough, do we think, to to make a difference here?
Through the chair, the Water Master Plan did not make growth assumptions on reserve because there is, there are ongoing planning processes that basically there is a level of uncertainty currently. So we didn't want to make an incorrect estimate. But we have, what we have done is look at the type of current land uses and evaluating what is required within our water distribution system in order to deliver suitable water pressure and flow to the property line. So essentially, you know, all all private properties are, or or reserved lands are looked upon the same there, that our our system can deliver water to the property line with suitable flow and pressure.
Okay, sorry, in the interest of time, we're we're actually out of time for ours, for this piece. But I'll allow you one more question and then and then we'll move on, okay?
Okay, try and pick the best one. I think, so there was a piece in the report that said our pressures will be, as I understood, we could, such that we could fight one fire at a time. And just wanted to understand what that really means and how this ties into our fire underwriter service rating. And, you know, for example, if we had another port fire, is that one fire? Does that count as like multiple fires or? And do things like pumper trucks allow us to, you know, avoid the pressure situation? And that's a different way to mitigate the same problem like, and basically, I guess where I'm going with this, it seems that only being able to fight one fire at a time could be problematic as our community seems, you know, continues to grow. And so I'm just wondering if you can speak to that limit.
Excuse me. I think that's a fairly standard assumption when it comes to things like Water Master Plans to consider fighting multiple fires at a given point. There's many different scenarios and it it becomes too conservative really to design a system to account for for that. So I think it's a fairly standard design assumption. Maybe, do you have anything to add to that?
I'm sure. I think I'll just say through the chair. It is typical design standard. And I think it ties to fire underwriters ratings, although I'm not a co-consultant by any means, that depending on the size of the municipality and the complexity of the municipality, depending on preference zones, there would be requirements or recommendations to consider fighting multiple fires at one time. But given the the size of a particular district, the typical design guidelines would be to look at improvements to the network that would allow you to fight one fire at a time.
Thanks, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, thank you for ensuring that there was a large technical engineering report for my return to council. It was nice to read the hundreds of pages. My first question is, the updated plan says the maximum day demand will surpass capacity in 2026. There is an item in our financial plan this year for Power Springs production, well design and construction. Can I assume that that's going to cover that short-term capacity issue? I just want to make sure that that's not the headline coming out of today's meeting, is that we're going to run out of water in 2026.
Through through the chair, so just to be very clear, we are expected to reach our licensed limit in 2026. We have practical capacity to actually supply beyond that. So our existing pump and well system is able to supply additional capacity beyond that. But as you mentioned, we do have a capital project to add an additional well to ensure that we still have a sufficient buffer in terms of our supply capacity. So we we aren't anticipating any sort of water supply shortages.
Thank you for clarifying that for myself and for the public. My other question is around the water rate structures. And this is something that I have toyed with a little bit in advance, this study being done. But right now, there's no differentiation between proposed rates for different housing types. So appreciate that we've moved towards a metering system for multiplex apartment townhouses. But we're still on the estimated rates that I've seen in the rate study, basically trying to achieve a similar price for a single-family home to an average amount of use for a townhouse or an or an apartment. And I know, we know that the demand on systems is higher for single-use dwellings than more dense forms of housing. So why wouldn't we differentiate our future water structure or water rate structure to accommodate or account for that use on our water system?
Through the chair, good question. And so the intent of the water rate structure is to charge an average-consuming multifamily property less than a single-family flat rate. The way that we looked at it is that it was assumed that multifamily properties consume less water. The cost of operating our system, a lot of the costs of operating our system are fixed and not related to consumption. But then a certain portion of our water utility costs are consumption-related. And so we have proposed the rate structure to charge less for those, for that portion. Basically, all customers would pay the same for the fixed portion. But then metered customers would receive a benefit from their reduced consumption in terms of paying less than what a a single-family home would be expected to pay.
Okay, that's helpful. And I suspect we'll get into more detail when a rate structure does come back, specific rate bylaw.
Yes, we can certainly provide that.
Okay, and then my other question, I'll make it quick, Chair. In your balance for not moving towards a multi-tiered rate structure system, the one reason in the con column was around water conservation. And my understanding is that we went through this whole process of water metering as like the key driving factor was to conserve water and encourage people to conserve water. So why would we not weight that more heavily in our analysis to move towards a multi-tiered system versus a one-tiered system?
Through the chair, is certainly considered. Basically, the implementation side of things, we expect that there could be challenges moving from our flat rate system straight to a stepped system. There is additional complexity with that. We do think that will achieve a measurable benefit of simply moving from a flat rate to a metered rate system. So that's, that's a good starting point. We expect benefits of that. And then potentially, depending on how water consumption proceeds in the future, we could shift to that. But basically, it's a good starting point to start with a single tier and to see how it impacts our consumption to develop experience, but not just to jump straight into that system because we do expect, you know, more challenges in terms of that initial implementation. And we don't have the data in terms of how much individual properties use. So going straight to a tiered system makes it challenging to set rates and what those steps should actually be.
Thanks, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'll be following up on Mayor Herford's comments or question regarding the Chikai Fan. I'm a bit surprised about the projections there. And you referred to Mr. Rolson, the conversations with economic development. And my question, my first question is, are these growth projections based on the same transportation analysis zone units that have been used with the DCC bylaw? And will that information be coming forward with the DCC bylaw in in next while? I'm interested to see more detail on those projections. Are you using the same mapping system to project growth?
Through the chair, unfortunately, the planning and economic development departments aren't here to answer those more detailed questions. I do know that the growth projections that we're using for the Water Master Plan are consistent with what we're using for the Transportation Master Plan and presumably the DCC bylaw. I can't confirm that 100% because I'm not as familiar with the DCC bylaw. However, given the work that's been developed to to develop our growth projections, I'm assuming that we are using a consistent growth pattern throughout. But it would really, we should have the the planning departments and economic development department report back on that.
The background to my interest is that the Chikai River Development Project is planning a business industrial park up there. And frankly, it's already full. It hasn't even started being planned yet. There's enough interest in there that we really do need to be looking at projections for the Chikai Fan for industrial land as the berm gets built and those planning exercises can be realized. Also, at the airport, a number of tenants there are really constrained due to lack of water. And there's a proposal next to the landfill that is constrained by lack of water pressure, I believe for fire protection purposes, and maybe our landfill as well. So this is background to my interest, but I'll come back to a question here. Are you able then, in a five-year cycle, for returning to the Water Master Plan? Are you comfortable that we can reassess these needs on that five-year cycle?
Through the chair, yes. Every time we do a Water Master Plan, we take into account new growth projections, any additional knowledge that we may have at the time of the Water Master Plan. So in five years' time, when we update this plan, we'll take into account any any new growth projections or land use types that we have at the time. any any new growth projections or land use types that we have at that time.
Thank you. Under Bill 44 impact assessment, there's reference to some things, strategy we may be able to pursue or developers may be able to pursue with the fire underwriters survey analysis to avoid extra costs, if you like. I wonder if that might be relevant for industry in the Chikai Fan because we have a proposal right next to the landfill and that's their handicap. Perhaps there are other strategies we might pursue. I'm sorry if that may be a comment rather than a question, but I do think that we need to pursue those avenues to facilitate economic development. Finally, I do have one more brief question. About 12 years ago, at the corner of Guilford Drive and Clark Drive, a there was an announcement in the newspaper regarding an installation there, PRV. Well, nobody in Hospital Hill or Vallet Cliff knew what PRV stood for until it was built. And it's built above ground, unlike other PRV stations, which are built below ground, like across from the Adventure Center. That station is listed in the capital projects list for an upgrade. And I just wanted to highlight it because it's a traffic hazard. It reduces visibility at that busy and busier and busier intersection significantly. And so I just wanted to highlight that in case that may come up in in planning for that intersection. And I'm sure that the traffic master plan has also has that intersection in focus for its projected busyness. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you very much. Yeah, for the the engineering report, an absolute pleasure to read. Quest, two questions. One about the strategy to get our fire, the fire flows from 60 liters per second to 90 liters per second for the proposed Bill 44 changes or changes that might come as a result of Bill 44. Do we have any idea? So I'm, we have a choice of preemptively putting in the the pipes to accommodate or asking developers or homeowners or whoever's doing the change to do a fire underwriter survey and potentially change the structure of their of their build for some for to to accommodate it? Do we have any idea? So what I would, I would not want to get into a situation where we're asking somebody to develop, if somebody's developing their property, to ask them to spend, I'm going to make up a number, $10,000 on an underwriting survey and another $30,000 in, you know, materials changes and that they need to do for us to save potentially less than that when we multiply that that fire underator survey and whatever that cost might be associated with that. Do you have any sense for how much that would cost if you were to take a standard squamish box? Somebody wanted to tear down and put up a fourplex. How much additional cost are we putting on that development? And how can we ration like, has that been thought about in the in terms of the cost of upgrading the whole system?
Through the chair, unfortunately, I don't have those costs available. I, we have seen fire underwriters surveys completed in the past on a fairly regular basis, so it's not an out of the ordinary type of request. But unfortunately, I don't have those costs on hand.
Yeah, and I wouldn't propose it's out of the ordinary. I don't even think it's out of out of act. But when we, when I think about these things, ultimately, somebody's paying for these upgrades to happen and whether, you know, if if we're paying more money to have the upgrades not happen. But homeowner is still spending the money to get the upgrade. It's anyways, okay. So that'll go into an unknown. When we, did you, did you say during, I couldn't find it in the report, but I think I heard it in your presentation, that the budget impact of this would be approximately 800,000 per year?
Through the chair, the cost of the AC water main renewal program would result in an additional $800,000 per year compared with what we're currently spending for water main replacements.
And that is. And then later in the report, you said that or what it says, rates are anticipated to require approximately 5% increase annually over the next five years to fully implement the plan. That 800,000 per year is include would be covered by this 5% per year increase.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. Is there anything special about asbestos cement pipes that make them need to be replaced other than them just being at the end of their life cycle? Like it would be same for any other pipe at the end of its life cycle, correct?
That's correct. It's just an end of end of life pipe replacement.
Thanks. I, in the interest of time, I'll just limit myself to one or two questions. But I was wondering if staff has any concerns about our water security being impacted by climate change, specifically flow rates of streams being low during heat domes and later in the summer, receding glaciers, which is our water source, and also winter seeing lower snow packs.
Through the chair, we have a well protection plan that has looked at that, included a hydro geological study that looked at climate change and potential risks to our water source and identified glacier receipt, hotter, drier summers and lower recharge to our aquifer as possible long term risks. It was recommended that we install a monitoring well within the Ring Creek aquifer, which we have done. And we're now able to monitor long term levels in that aquifer, which we have been doing and haven't noticed anything, any changes. But yes, it has been identified as a possible risk and we are continuing to do to monitor that. And then it's also a consideration for potential future additional reliance on the Stowamas Creek that we should be considering climate change and how that might impact summer flows, which is when we would actually be needing to use that as a water source. So that's part of the feasibility study that I mentioned as part of the long term water supply strategy.
Okay, good. I don't know if you have this information on hand, but I see that the report that we have has the flow the licensed capacities for the rivers. And I was just wondering how that compared to kind of low season, high season flow rates of those rivers.
Through the chair, that's another item to be studied as part of the feasibility study. Those licenses have been in place for quite some time and potentially based on conditions decades ago as opposed to current. So that requires further analysis.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll be looking for a motion. Mayor Herford, motion received or staff recommendation?
I'll move the staff recommendations, both of them.
Seconded by Counselor French.
I'll be really brief here. Just thank you so much for the for the work and the amount of detail and and thought that have gone into this give me confidence that we're headed in the right in the right direction. Even when we know there's some some unknowns, I've heard about how we're going to address those going forward. So I'm comfortable supporting this right now. I would like to sort of find the way, I think it was Counselor Peddengill's comments around how we have some sort of program to not mandate, which is sort of what we've been been hearing, but incentivize folks to move towards a metering or roll the dice on going to a metering to see if it positively affects their their rates. And I, I'm comfortable with the fact that that, you know, there's a five year renewal period and that, you know, this isn't some, this may not be something that happens inside of this 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 term or even this piece of the the water master plan. However, if it is possible, I would like to understand that and and see what could be done. What could be done there? As I know that there are folks that are taking extraordinary measures in their in their in their homes and in their their lives to reduce their their consumption. And I'd like to find a way to to recognize that. And really, the efforts to date have been remarkable. And I really appreciate the the efforts from everyone involved in the those conservation rates. I think that's very much worth worth celebrating and was a great, my favorite slide, maybe this whole thing, the rest of them came with huge price tags, but it was great. Great to see that. And it'd be great to be able to reward those people that are making those those changes in their in their household through this metering piece. But I don't, I think that's an additional complexity, you know, right now, today as we sit here, but it is something I'd like to see us move towards. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
This is a very interesting and impressive report, and it's going to go in a binder and has a special place in my library. I wanted to pass on a comment to my fellow counselors. Mr. Rolston has mentioned uncertainty with respect to Bill 44 impacts. And I think we should keep our ear to the ground as to what's going on elsewhere in the province as to these impacts and their costs in case we need to be at the ready for advocacy vis a vis the province. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peddengill.
Yeah, glad to see the the report and the update and have an understanding of, you know, we hear a lot from the community about our infrastructure not keeping up and so on. So it's good to have that clarity on where we are and in in understanding of where we're we're adjusting next. And so it's really good to see. I would, I am still curious about the Alice Lake Pressure Zone and and what is driving that? And maybe that's the Chikai Fan. I wasn't sure how all the pieces connect, but find out that question another day, I guess. One thing that I'm not sold on yet or fully understanding is our reliance on powerhouse springs. And it's not clear to me, I see the expense rationale for some of our choices. But I'm not certain if an aquifer is more or less resilient in a drought than a river. And so the single point of failure piece is still a bit uncomfortable to me. And I'd like to understand a bit more about, you know, the risks of some of the different decisions, notwithstanding the cost. And then I do think, you know, I heard in talking to some people, they'd really like to see us incentivize non potable water use, rain barrels and these sorts of things, which to my mind really goes back to the more we get metering and the more we're not incentivizing or assuming that an un-metered house is using low water. It's kind of all impacting the same thing. And so to me, you know, it's not something we need to do next year, but I think it does push us towards this system where, you know, the more water you use, the more you pay. And that's the incentive to use rain barrels or whatever. And so in my mind, we are going to, if it's voluntary or incentivized voluntary, getting to a place where everyone is metered probably. And so I think it's probably useful to keep that in the back of our mind as an end goal.
Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, definitely speaking in support of the motions, the staff recommendation. I think we need, this is one of the core pieces, core functions of municipal government is to keep the pipes in the ground, running and in good shape. And it looks to me like there's been a very clear, there's, this is a very clear plan being put in place and there's lots of uncertainties between now and 2040 or 2041. But I think this is certainly moving forward along the right path. So thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Any other comments? Okay, well, I'll just say, speaking in support of the motion, I just want to say thank you so much for all the hard work you put into putting these, this very thorough report and presentation together. I look forward to seeing the feasibility to studies. I'm very curious to see how climate change is impacting, specifically, climate change is impacting our water sources. It's just, we have, we have such an abundance of water here and it's a resource that we really can't take for granted. You know, it's just crucial to all life. But infrastructure and water security are both just such critical pieces of our community and keeping it running. So I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work. And yeah, all in favor of the motion? Let's see unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, and now we're going to talk about the Mamquam Ring Road Failure Repairs Update. It will be presented by Mr. Moorewood and Mr. Rolston.
Good afternoon. My name is Jesse Moorewood, Capital, Manager of Capital Projects. Joining me is David Rolston, Senior Manager of Infrastructure Planning. Today, we are providing an update on the Mamquam Ring failures. The recommendation of of today's RDC is that the committee receive this report from the community development team. We have three main objectives today as well. Our intent today is to convey that engineers intend is still to open up Mamquam Ring Road to select industrial traffic. That the capital work has been completed. Some capital work has been completed on the Ring Road as and there is some work remaining as well as we want to discuss the conclusions and recommendations of the slope stability review and assessment study as well as their the next steps for implementation. So a quick background is that in 2021, there was an atmospheric river that caused significant damage to the Mamquam Ring Road. This resulted in a number of areas along the road that saw a significant cracking and erosion, as well as there was a landslide on one of the upper portions of the road that was on private property. To date, the district has completed kind of two iterations of work. The certainly the first one was was what I just mentioned was the atmospheric work did a significant amount of damage on the on the district's infrastructure. That work was completed in the spring of 2023. In 2024, additional cracking was identified in the road and damage to the road. This was from subsequent wet weather events that caused the damage. The money that the district has spent to date has been approximately $475,000. Some of this was reimbursed through through government grant programs. I'd like to reiterate that the district's intent is to open the road to a single is, sorry, is to open the the road to industrial traffic only, select industrial traffic. The purpose, the reason of this is that there in locations, this road has been reduced to single lane traffic. And in fact, before any of this events happened, the road was was deemed unsafe for the for the public and has been for a few years prior to this event was was closed to the public traffic. So our intent is still to open up to select industrial traffic. And this is for safety purposes. So I just want to identify some of the work that's been done recently. There was, as I mentioned, additional cracking that happened along the road, making the road unsafe for traffic. The work was completed recently in the last few weeks, and this involves about 300 meters of bank stabilization along the road. Also, on private section of land, there had, there was a landslide. The landowner has done significant work to to address the the damage as well as address future slope instability. However, there is a number of work to be done. We don't have a schedule on when this work will be done. We are working with the landowner to to complete it as soon as possible.
So the district completed a risk assessment to evaluate the potential of reopening up this road. And just to reiterate what Mr. Moorewood said is that work that has been done on the road to date is to repair damage that was directly attributable to the 2021 storm. But based on the current condition, there are slope hazards that remain that are impacting our ability to reopen that road. So we engaged Frontera to complete a slope stability review and risk assessment and to evaluate the potential to reactivate the road and to inform risk. Next slide please. There were six main hazards that were identified that could impact safety to road users that included slumping and That included slumping and tension cracking of the roadway, slope erosion, undercutting of the slope from the Mamcom River, a deep-seated slope instability, rock fall from the upper slope, slumping of the upper slope due to over steepened slopes or erosion, and seepage. And so the risk was calculated essentially, the risk to loss of life for industrial traffic that would be using that road. And not to go into too much detail here, but essentially there's a detailed calculation that looks at the probability of a hazard that occurs and could actually cause a fatality for a person using the road. And this was focused on limited industrial traffic on the road only, because the road is currently not suitable for public traffic. There are some fairly significant sections that are single lane only. The results of the risk assessment showed that there is a one in 3,900 risk to loss of life for an individual driver that makes 100 trips per year. The risk assessment also concluded that risk from the upper slope is roughly 10 times greater than risk arising from the lower slope. So to compare the risk of loss of life compared with risk tolerance criteria, there is some British Columbia literature that suggests one in 10,000 as an acceptable threshold for train operators in landslide prone areas. And the district has risk tolerance criteria for new housing or existing and proposed housing development. So for existing development, the threshold is that risk should be no higher than one in 10,000, and for proposed development, no higher than one in 100,000. So the, the risk to loss of life currently exceeds district and provincial standards. So the recommendation is that prior to opening the road, that risk should be mitigated. The primary thing that, recommendation is to reduce the upper slope angle to a one and a half to one slope, to clear and maintain rockfall catchment ditch and the swale on the upper side of the road, to install no stopping sign sections in higher risk areas of the road, and to complete regular inspections. So that means quarterly after any sign of instability, following any heavy rainfall, earthquake or forest fire. And then also to implement conditions for, to, to regulate use of the road by industrial drivers. That means imposing speed limits, use of radio control, and then also traffic control to prevent the public from, public traffic from entering the road while the road is in use by industrial operators. And so the intent and what we're hoping to work towards is to reopen the road to select industrial users once the up, upper slope has been flattened, as recommended, and also upon implementation of the other recommendations of, of the risk assessment report that I discussed on the last slide. So the recommendation is that the committee receive the Mamquam Ring Road Failure Repairs Update Report from Community Development.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mayor Herbert?
Thank you. Thank you. Just in the last little bit of your presentation, you mentioned the, the risk is much higher from up, from the, from above the road than below the road from a safety standpoint. I think about all the cracking and sloughing and so on. I think it's the same, is that true from a road just viability perspective? And are we focusing, I just want to make sure we're focusing the energy in the right, in, not only in the right direction, but where, that when we get over this piece, we actually have something that can deliver the service that we, that it intends to. So are we confident, not just from a risk, a safety risk perspective, but that everything's been done below soap that can to, or that should be done to stabilize the road?
Yeah, in terms of the, the risk to loss of life, that, that was the main focus of this, this risk assessment and slope stabilization report. So, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Morewood to discuss the actual resiliency of the infrastructure from an ongoing operations and maintenance perspective.
Yeah, through, through the chair. The, the report also made a series of recommendations beyond just the cracking. So it recommended doing some, pulling back some slope and removing some of the unstable slope. So it's certainly significantly better than it was pre atmospheric river. Not only have we, we addressed the cracking, but we actually reduced the risk of future cracking in those areas. You know, we haven't touched every piece of the road, and it wasn't built to a current standard. So, so I, it is, it is possible and likely there will be future damage in, in the road, but we have improved it certainly in the sections that we've worked on.
Thank you. I'd like to explore a little bit the future state when this hazard has been addressed to, to an acceptable level and it's, can be used for industrial traffic. How, what mechanisms would we use to sort of motivate industry to take this path? I know some would like to today, and others are likely to go path of least resistance. So I'm assuming there'd be an expense with having traffic control and, and that sort of, and that sort of thing. And like, do we have the ability to direct traffic there? And what does that actually look like? I just want to make sure that we all at this table and in the community understand what the potential impact of having this back online could be.
Yeah, through the chair, Private Secretary, Manager of Transportation. So our, our tool is the, the traffic bylaw currently identifies truck routes within our community. And those truck routes are required for industrial users when they have a viable truck route to access where they are going. I'd have to explore procedures for sort of a limited service truck route and what the, the requirements would be. It's recognizing that the road, the width of the road and the operational constraints would require an additional consideration for traffic control and managing access at other times. But the, the traffic bylaw could be updated to help enforce the use of this route for the users that we're targeting.
Yeah, thank you. I think what I'm trying to reconcile here is sort of the, the community may see industrial traffic as, you know, a big reefer truck taking, you know, a twice a week delivery up to the university cafeteria as industrial traffic. And I don't think that that's necessarily captured in this. This is more sort of production level things, whether that's forestry or, or aggregate or whatever those construction activities, something like that, that happens over some volume. So I just want to make sure that we understand broadly what to still expect on the Boulevard and to, through the neighborhood, even with this operat- operational, and make sure that we know how to, how to motivate that. Is that sort of a correct assumption?
Yeah, through the chair, yeah, that's a correct assumption that this would be limited industrial use. And so the sort of low, local dump truck that's delivering a load of gravel to a construction project would, would still likely use the Boulevard for their access and, and the operational requirements associated with a, a limited access road would not be required for that particular user. But instances where there's a significant, significant forestry haul, for example, and there's continued use anticipated over an extended period of time, there'd be additional opportunities to ensure that they are required to fulfill our, our need to use the, the Ring Road if operational.
So is that Paul, is that work underway or is that something that needs to be directed from here? I just want to try to shorten up any potential lag time between the road being coming, you know, operational from a, a safety and hazard perspective, and then make sure the practical, that we have the practical pieces in place to ensure that that will get used in the, in those times. So is that something that's underway now, or how do you see these things lining up?
That work currently isn't underway and would need to be directed. And yeah, our ability to address that in the timeframe when we deem the road ready to be operational would need to be considered and, and other ongoing priorities would need to be considered when we, if, if that work was to be advanced.
Okay, I'll ponder that and I have one more question. The, the hazards report speaks to the safety of, of industrial users using, using the road and has, I think is a different category even for being stationary on the road and, and versus moving through the road. And I wondered how these things generally, and, and this report reflect the, the use of folks just walking or riding their bikes up or down this road, which is pretty well the exclusive use we're seeing today already. How does that play in, both in the risk assessment overall and in when this becomes operational again, that use sort of happening at the same, at the same time?
Through the chair, the, the risk assessment didn't explicitly, or currently to date does not explicitly consider active transportation, so walkers and cyclists. We have had a discussion with Frontera who completed the, the risk assessment, and they indicated that one of the primary risks for industrial traffic is actually impacting a slide that's already occurred, of having more heavy vehicles, reduce sightlines, generally higher speeds than active transportation. The actual risk arising from a person walking or cycling and being impacted by a landslide that occurs at that time is actually quite a lot lower than, than the risk to industrial traffic. So we, we have had discussions with them to actually update the risk assessment report to specifically address the risk to active transportation. But generally, it's considered that that risk would be lower and that it's likely going to be suitable to allow for active transportation to, to use the road. So that, that's a piece of ongoing work. And then in terms of actually managing traffic, say in the future, when the road is opened up to limited industrial traffic, one of the conditions would be that there's some form of traffic control to eliminate any conflict between industrial truck impacting an active transportation user of the road. So we would likely implement some kind of traffic control that prevented use, active transportation uses while the road was in use by an industrial operator. But it could likely be opened up for all other times than that.
Okay, and that would happen under the same sort of policy work that was being discussed earlier. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Hilton.
Yeah, thanks very much. So yeah, there was, thank you for the risk analysis, for, for having Frontera do the, the risk analysis on the, the risk to the industrial users, the trucks on the road. In my mind, I'm thinking of this question in a slightly wider, wider scope. So there's a risk to the truck users to, if we open the road, but there's a risk to other road users if we don't open the road. Specifically, the trucks, by having that road closed, we have the trucks coming through a school zone, which I think it was just four or five years ago, was brought down to a 30 kilometer an hour speed zone. So I assume district's response to putting a school zone in the Boulevard is a safety response. And now we're allowing or we're, we're preventing trucks from going on this alternative route because of a, of a, of a risk of life safety to the, to the truck drivers. And so have we considered the increased risk to pedestrians or cyclists or the, the road users on the Boulevard, particularly because it's a school zone, versus the risk imposed by the possible of, possibility of a landslide?
Through the chair, we have considered it qualitatively, sort of from a judgment perspective and recognize that yes, there, there are risks associated with having industrial traffic on, on a municipal road and within, you know, a school zone. It hasn't been quantitatively considered in the same sense that a risk assessment has been performed, you know, in relation to hazards. So at this point, it, it's been considered and that's informing our desire to want to reopen the Mamquam Ring Road to limited industrial traffic and remove that traffic from, from the school zone. But it, yeah, it has not been quantified to date.
Is that the sort of thing that is possible to quantify? I mean, it wouldn't, certainly wouldn't be Frontera, but perhaps from traffic experts, is this the kind of thing that is quantifiable in some kind of reliable way? And could it be compared to, say, a landslide risk analysis as we've got from, from Geotech?
Through the chair, so there's definitely the ability to quantify the risk associated with the operations of the street. Whether it would be quantified to compare with the risk identified from the, the slope instability, I, I don't know the answer to that. There are traffic safety experts that could provide us with clear direction. It's, it's a pretty unique situation, and a lot of the sort of risk modification factors, which is kind of the, the language that's used in traffic safety are, are more focused on highways and locations where there's more data that they can actually run the numbers and figure out what the, the changes of risk are associated with different characteristics of the street. So there's certainly more information that could be uncovered, whether or not it, I, I'd struggle to see an apples to apples comparison with slope instability.
Thanks. Onto another question. This, reducing the upper slope angle to the 1.5 to 1, that upper slope is on private property. Whose responsibility is it to reduce that danger to the, to the roadway? Is that the district's responsibility or is that the private landowners? I'm thinking of a scenario, if I have a tree on my property that's dead, a dead tree on my property, it's got some risk of falling onto some, my neighboring property. It's on my property, it's my responsibility to, to cut the tree down. Where does the responsibility lie for that, reducing the slope of that, that land?
Through the chair, I'm going to try to answer this. The, the perspective that, that, that we and this landowner have taken is that landowner is responsible for, for addressing the slope instability. So that's how the landowner has been performing, and that's, that's ours, has been our assumption to this point as well. You know, if, if the landowner did not do that at some point, then, then that's maybe a different conversation. But, but right now, I believe that everybody understands that the landowner is, is responsible for that work.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Councilor Pen Gill.
Yeah, we had some comments and questions about future state versus current state for active transit users versus industrial users and so on. And I'm just wondering if staff can clarify now versus what, what the end goal is for industrial users, pedestrians and cyclists, and then sort of private civilian vehicles, current and future? What is or will be or won't be permitted?
Currently, the, the road is closed to all traffic, and the objective that we're working towards is to reopen the road to industrial traffic and to active transportation, not concurrently, but active transportation most of the time, and then during periods of industrial use, that it would be solely for, for that use. And that's, that's what we're working towards, to open the road to anything beyond that would require additional investments in the road. Because as I mentioned, there are fairly lengthy, single lane sections where it's not suitable for something like reopening the road to, to public access in its current state. So that would require further future investment.
Thanks. Do we have any other questions? Mayor Herbert?
I was going to move receipt.
Seconded by Councilor Anderson. All in favor? Oh, sorry, comments? Yeah, you go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
Mayor Herbert's great grandfather, who built this road about 85 years ago, would be very impressed with how important his road is today and the discussion we're having. Back in that day, it, it had very limited and modest needs. We have, in our report before us, Mr. Morewood discusses under budget some costs. There's some operating costs. There are also some maintenance costs that are projected. And it occurs to me that it would be possible to implement a user fee system, at least for the timber operators. And I think that they would welcome this. It's their road too that they depend on. A couple of bucks per cubic meter. It's that kind of a thing that could go into a maintenance fund. There are other crown timber or three crown timber and probably some quarry tenures up there as well. It's also a provincial park access road. And I suggest that we should not only be looking to the provincial government for project grant opportunities, but for an ongoing dialogue as to our regarding our situation. This road accesses a vast area between the Ring Creek subdivision and Chikai River. And it is, of course, accessing to a park. The Chikai River is a location of our berm that will be built and we will be maintaining it. All of this involves road use and equipment transportation. We should be engaging perhaps with BC Parks, as well as the Ministry of Forests regarding a strategy. And perhaps even considering the opportunity, at least for access to Chikai and Mashador, of the Alice Lake Park gate access, of course, for controlled use. It will require a few bucks for an upgrade. But really, we just need to consider how important this road is and the constraints that exist and make sure that all of the relevant provincial government agencies are on board with us and fully understand the picture. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much for your work. And now we're scheduled to have a break until 2:45 or sorry, 3:15. So let's just have, let's reconvene at 3:20. Does that sound okay? Okay. Can I get this meeting started again now? Just do a quick little sound check, make sure we're okay. Yeah, all right. So now we're going to talk about development cost charges and amenity cost charge bylaw updates presented by Mr. Daley. And we also have Mr. Abs here as well to discuss the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, community of the whole. My name is Brian Daley, planner with Community Development. With me today is Dave Marrow, Director of Major Projects, and Daryl Abs, who is the consultant leading the development cost charge and amenity cost charge bylaw update. With that, I will pass the presentation over to Mr. Abs.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks to the chair. Thanks, members of council. Pleasure to be here this afternoon. So I'll run through a brief presentation. Happy to answer questions as we go, or if you want to wait to the end and then have the discussion, I'm okay with that. So the purpose of of undertaking this study is really twofold, to update the current development cost charges bylaw that you have to update for ongoing master plan work for the transportation master plan and the water master plan. And then as well to provide for an ACC or an amenity cost charge bylaw because of new legislation that was introduced in 2023 by the province, which allows you to impose charges to recover the growth related capital costs for amenities. And I'll talk a little bit about what those, the definition is for those amenities. So as part of this, we're reviewing both both bylaws and presenting both bylaws. Today, we're really presenting the draft information, want to get council's feedback, initial feedback before we go up and undertake the stakeholder consultation. So lots of work to do still to finalize these numbers, get feedback from the community before we are able to finalize these bylaws. So the purpose of both of these revenue tools is to recover the capital costs associated with new development. And so with new residential, non residential development comes the need for investment in infrastructure. We're gonna need to build new roads, active transportation, water, wastewater, et cetera. And so because we have to invest in that infrastructure, we have to, the money has to come from somewhere. And to the extent possible, we can recover that from the new development, then we will. These costs are in addition to what a developer would normally pay for or construct as part of their development or their subdivision. And so through your subdivision servicing bylaw, that will identify what infrastructure the developers are responsible for as part of their development. And then development cost charges and amenity cost charges are then for charges are then for infrastructure more broadly on top of that. Keeping in mind that the intent of these revenue tools is really to reduce the burden on the taxpayer. Again, just noting that the money has to come from somewhere. You have to invest in this infrastructure. We have to pay for it. And so that'll be very important when we get to the discussion on the municipal assist factor and the amount of money that the district wants to contribute on top of the non-growth related components of these projects. So at a very high level, and not to diminish all the work that I do, but very simply, the development cost charge and amenity cost charge is really just taking the cost of infrastructure we need to accommodate the development, divided by the development, and then we're going to get our charges on a per unit basis for residential development, and then per square feet or per square meters for non-residential development. So now that the province has introduced this revenue tool, what I thought would be helpful is really just doing a side-by-side comparison of the legislative framework and the Local Government Act between the DCCs and ACCs. Very high level, they're very similar pieces of legislation or wording in the legislation with some minor differences. And so we'll focus on those. So for DCCs, they've expanded the definition of what an eligible service is to include. So we have sewer, water, drainage, fire, police, highways, and then solid waste and recycling facilities. With ACCs, they've provided a definition of what you can include, and they say it's a facility or feature that provides social, cultural heritage, recreational, or environmental benefits. And then they said including without limitation. And then they go on to list a number of types of facilities. So community, youth, or senior centers, recreational or athletic facilities, libraries, daycare facilities, public squares. So those are listed, but again, it says including without limitation. So potentially, we can broaden that definition and broaden the infrastructure, we can, costs we can recover from ACCs, but it does have to meet the test of social, cultural heritage, recreational, or environmental benefits. So keeping that in mind, when we get to the calculations, what we've gone forward with is the bullet points that they provided in the legislation. We didn't expand on it at this time, but happy to take any feedback on that. With respect to the timing of collection, determining if it's growth-related and funded with DCCs or ACCs or not, those are very similar. But the big change here is that the DCCs, to get approval to pass the bylaw, we need to submit all the information to the inspector of municipalities. They're going to approve it before council can officially put the bylaw into force. With ACCs, there's no requirement to submit anything to the province. And so what that means is we need to have a consultation with the development community, and then council can consider and pass the bylaw as is. With respect to when the charges are not payable, so there's mandatory exemptions in both revenue tools. If you're exempt from taxation, for example, place of worship, they don't have to pay a development cost charge. Now with a development cost charge, you have the ability to provide for some discretionary exemptions. And so certain types of units, if it's a residential development with less than four units, you don't have to charge. If it's a residential unit less than 29 square meters, you don't have to charge. But with the ACCs, there's no discretionary exemptions allowed. So just a minor difference there. With respect to waiving or reducing the charges, you can only do so in the cases listed in the legislation. And so they're similar for DCCs and ACCs for not-for-profit rental housing, including supportive living housing and for-profit affordable rental housing are both, you're able to waive or reduce those charges, but you need to do so by bylaw, which sets up the parameters and what the reduction in the charge is going to be. For DCCs, there's a couple other bullet points, subdivision of small lots with low greenhouse gas emissions and designed to result in low environmental impact, you can also reduce for those. And then lastly, for the municipal assist factor, similar to DCCs, it's not explicit in the legislation, but through best practices, the best practices guide put out by the province and historical approaches, you do have to provide some level of municipal assist. And so typically, the recommendation is always start at 1%, which is the minimum you can impose, and then increase it from there if you feel the need based on the calculated charges. And so we take that similar approach for ACCs. So getting into some of the information we used, we use the master planning information, so transportation master plan and the water master plan, growth forecast information to inform the calculation of our charges. Remember that simple diagram which says the infrastructure cost divided by the growth that it's going to accommodate? That's how we calculate the charges. We want to make sure those two things line up. So we're looking at about 26,000 people to 2041, in about 11,300 units, and about 12,500 employees, and about 4.9 million square feet of non-residential floor space. So based on the capital needs identified, when we take a look at the calculator, the proposed DCCs, when we incorporate all the services, you can see for the residential charges, they're going up by about 100%. And for the non-residential charges, 182% for commercial, 179 for institutional, 133 for industrial. When I get to the final slide, I'll come back to this. It appears a little bit misleading because we have active transportation costs as part of the road costs, and I'll talk about that in a sec, in the calculated DCCs. But currently, you collect for them under the community amenity contributions. So we've kind of moved them into DCCs where they're appropriately captured. So the increase is high, but about 60% of the roads' charge is active transportation. So, you know, we'll come back to kind of the total fulsome impact from DCCs and ACCs under what's proposed versus DCCs and CACs currently today.
Sorry, we just have a question from your [inaudible].
Just a quick question on this slide. When I think of the first two categories, a single detached, low-density, single-detached, small lot, and in the context of the housing work that's happening right now, I wonder about the per lot versus per unit, and just the rationale there, given that there's many units that could occur on those lots now with the new baseline. This is maybe a question for our planning staff, or is this prescribed in the provincial approach and is a piece that just hasn't really been flushed out yet as the housing work sort of has that knock-on effect?
So through the Chair, I'm assuming you're referring to the small legislation, these, yeah. So the single-detached unit would be, really, the per lot is the per-unit charge. If there's additional units added, let's say apartment-type units, those would be considered apartments on top of the single-detached unit, right? So if there's a single detached, and then you add a basement apartment, or on a garage, or something like that, that wouldn't be two single-detached units, that would more so be a single-detached unit plus an apartment unit. And so a big driver of this rate increase I kind of mentioned already is the active transportation projects that you currently collect under the community amenity contributions. And so of the total program, I think, so for roads, we have a total gross cost of $340 million. And this was presented to you through the transportation master plan. What's recoverable from development cost charges, about $268 million of that. And so, understanding that that's a significant cost, one of the things that we wanted to bring forward was that full cost, to show you what that full impact is on the development cost charge. I understand council is also considering maybe a scoped listing of capital projects for the transportation master plan, given some challenges in implementing the full program. So what we wanted to do was show you, well, if you did want to implement the full program, what's the cost and what's the development cost charge? If you wanted to go with that reduced program, what would the charge be, the development cost charge? And if you wanted to go with the full program, but reduce the charge through the municipal assist, how much would you need to fund to lower that charge as if you were implementing the lower capital list? And so what we presented here on this slide is just that. And so what it equates to is you would need to provide a municipal assist factor of 51% to the full program, if you wanted to reduce the charges as if you were implementing the lower program. And so what that means is essentially the charges drop, and you can see the increase for the residential units goes from 100% down to 30% to 40% in that range. And then for the non-residential, you can see as well, the increase drops to about 32, 46%. Understanding that if you were to go with the full capital program, and the full list of the projects in the transportation master plan, and you wanted to do a 51% municipal assist factor, that means that the district would have to find about $130 million from taxes to support that level of expenditures. You do have the option, if you choose through the transportation master plan process, to go with a reduced level of service and less infrastructure costs, it would reduce the charge and wouldn't require a municipal assist factor. But it's just up for council to decide if you want to go with a lower list of capital projects versus what was recommended on the transportation master plan. And so getting into a survey of the development cost charge rates with some neighboring communities, and this is again, in part, a little bit challenging when you're looking at, there's a number of revenue tools that municipalities have and districts have to impose on new development. But if we're just looking at development cost charge rates, you can see your current rate going from about $21,616 for a single-family unit. If you were to go with the reduced program or high municipal assist factor on roads, you'd be about in the middle of the range. And if you went with the full cost, you would be up near the high end of the range there. You can see here, we've split it up by the different services, and you can see roads being the largest component there, which is not dissimilar to the other municipalities. You can see roads is typically a really large portion of the others' DCCs as well. For townhouses, you can see that reduced charge for roads keeps you kind of in the same relative position as your comparators, and the full charge puts you up in about the middle of the range. And with apartments, similar story, puts you at about the middle of the range if you go with the full charge. In terms of the non-residential, you see for commercial and the cost per square meter, you see that charge go up significantly if you went with the full program. So going up from that $117.65 per square meter up to over $330 per square meter. Similarly, for industrial, again, if you went with the reduced level of capital spending, you'd be about in the middle of your comparators, maybe the high middle. And then if you went with the full charge, you'd be at the high end. And similarly, for institutional development. So with the ACC rates, what we've calculated is based on about $160 million in gross capital costs, with about $123 million of that being recoverable from ACCs. And it's a list of about 16 projects, includes a library, cultural community space, a couple projects at Brennan Park, recreation centers. So these projects comprise that $160 million of cost with $123 million recovery, which results in these charges here. So what you'll see as well is there's no non-residential charge being applied. And that's because trying to be consistent with your current parks DCC where all of the costs are allocated to residential development, we thought we'd be consistent with that policy and that approach, and applying these charges only to residential development as well. And not dissimilar to a number of other municipalities that have passed ACC bylaws. And so there aren't many municipalities or districts that have passed ACC bylaws. So we've gathered a few that we could find, and you can see they range significantly. And this is really due to some local factors, understanding that, you know, some municipalities or districts might have few amenities that they're trying to construct, maybe they've already invested a lot into existing amenities. Others are looking to expand and invest based on a significant growth. So you can see, right in the middle, you see North Vancouver, their ACC for a single-detached home is over $41,000. Burnaby, it's almost $27,000, and you're in about $17,000. So, and this is a slide I just added in, just to kind of bring all this together. So when we're looking at the total charge, so if we add in the DCCs and the community amenity contributions, today, we're sitting at about 1.5, 3.9% of the house price, depending on the type of unit you have. So a single-detached home could be up near that 4% of the house price. And so it ranges between 1.5 and 3.9. If we look at what we've calculated in terms of the DCCs and ACCs, it would range between about 2.5 to 3.2%. So still within that range that you're currently seeing in the market. And so when we look at these charges, in some instances, depending on the density of the development, the charge might actually go down per unit. And that's because currently your CACs are imposed, you have different rates for different types of density. So for single-detached development with less than 20 units, you had a higher CAC requirement. So for the general charge, it was 52,000 a unit. But when the density was higher than 20 units, your charge was actually relatively low. It was, I don't recall the exact number, but something in the range of 16, 15,000 a unit. So you can see for certain types of development, the charge, the total amount of charges they'll have to pay will actually go down in certain instances. So just want to put that out there for context, because it does get a little bit gray and murky when you're taking the active transportation out of CACs and putting them into DCCs. The increases look very high, but when you compare it to the overall impact of what a developer actually has to pay, the impacts are less significant. And with that, I just want to touch on the next steps. Where we're going from here is we're having a meeting tomorrow with the stakeholders, and so we'll have some consultation on the proposed charges for DCCs and ACCs. We'll compile the feedback from that meeting, and if we need to have another meeting, maybe with a broader group, we'll do that. And then we will make all the necessary changes, take your feedback, prepare the final financial model for the DCCs and ACCs along with the reports, and then we'll bring those forward for the first three readings for council. We'll submit the DCC information to the inspector, which will then hopefully get approved, and then come back to you for final approval. So with that, that concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to questions, I'll go with Counselor Anderson first, and then [inaudible].
Thank you. You highlighted the importance of our coming to terms with the ambition level we have for transportation master plan projects. I wondered what your schedule is that you foresee the consultation, stakeholder consultation for this project relative to the other. If I'm not mistaken, the transportation master plan will be coming back to us in January. Can we have these in sync, in other words, for council's consideration?
Yep. So through the Chair, we're, I think, we're amenable in working with the team here at the district to make sure that these, these projects align. We want to make sure that if you're making decisions on the transportation master plan, that that's going to align with the DCC rates. The province is going to want to make sure that those two things align anyways. And so we have two paths. If you're going to be bringing back the transportation master plan, making decision in January, then we can ensure that we update the DCC as required for January, and then have another consultation if needed after that with the development community, and then send that information to the inspector subsequently.
Thank you. The, will need to be, the project will need to be identifying areas for consideration for the ACC bylaw. I note that Pitt Meadows and Mission are using a citywide approach. To quote from Pitt Meadows, "As all growth in the city contributes to demand for new amenities, is recommended that the ACC apply to the entire city." And Pitt Meadows is, or Mission is the same. Have you, are we at a point where we know what direction we're going to take with respect to defining these areas?
So through the Chair, we've taken the approach that it would be district-wide. My perspective is that when we get into things like libraries, or recreation centers, or arenas, they should be looked at on a, on a municipal-wide, district-wide basis. If there are two arenas in a, in a municipality or district, depending on the timing of availability, you'll drive across town to the other one to bring your kids to the recreation program that's available at the time. And so typically, as well, when you're developing, determining you need, you know, another recreation center, a lot of times these are based on the total population, right? We needed an arena for every 10,000 people. And it doesn't necessarily get into specific areas. And so because the capital needs are generally determined by the growth in the entire district, my recommendation is usually to provide that on a district-wide. my recommendation is usually uh to provide that on a district wide basis.
Following up up on that, would we need, would be, we be able to use such a framework in addressing, for example, daycares, which might be more identifiably associated with a particular neighborhood's needs?
So through the chair, you could, um it it really depends on how you've determined that those needs are required. And so if you've determined that those needs are required specifically for an area and all of the other areas in the district are serviced with childcare and they will not need it, then I would say you could look at it on a more area specific basis. But if it's available, it's open, you're building it because of general growth, then I would suggest that it'd be done on a district by basis.
Thank you. Um I noticed that Pitt Meadows has taken a cost sharing approach, which involves a a hundred percent of estimated costs for recreational and cultural facilities, but twenty-five percent of the costs for public art, heritage conservation, environmental conservation, considering that there's grant opportunities for those latter categories. Could some kind of a scenario take shape here?
So through the chair, my recommendation is always to go forward assuming that uh you're not going to get a grant unless you've got actual approval for it. And so if you have approval for a grant, I would say you deduct it off the costs um at the outset of the calculations. Uh but if you don't have approval and you're just applying for a grant, uh what happens is, what happens if you don't get it? Then you're under collecting what you need to to service the community. And so uh my recommendation, our approach is always only include a grant deduction if you for sure have approval that you're getting it. If you have projects in your list and then you start to get grants and it's significant, then you can always update your ACC bylaw and reduce the charges by the grant amount.
Thank you. Um we in Squamish have a tradition of companies, developers contributing in kind, whether it's gravel or different kinds of things too, amenity projects. Uh is this something that can be considered in kind amenities or land even as an amenity in lieu?
So through the chair, yes, the legislation does allow for in kind contributions instead of payment of the ACC. So it is something you're allowed to to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I have councillor Pettingill next, followed by Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks. My understanding of amenity cost charges is that they are meant to, in the province's mind anyways, be a replacement for community amenity contributions. Um and to avoid the sort of money that gets lost to negotiation and uncertainty and so on. But as I understand, we're not thinking of replacing, we're looking to keep both. But with the many cost charges, we've got sort of a a a unit based price basically, but not how it gets split up with our community many contribution policy. We've got square foot amounts and how it's all divvied up. So how or when will we understand how these things in intersect? And and when like, because to my mind, we have to look at our CAC policy together with our new ACCs. How does that happen?
So through the chair, the uh the current CAC is recovering, there's a a general CAC and then there's an active transportation and parks CAC. So from my perspective, those charges would go away, because now we're collecting uh active transportation under DCC. We're collecting for uh recreational needs and such under the ACC. The only thing that I would suggest you keep is the uh affordable housing requirements that you have under the CAC, because we're not allowed to incorporate those under the ACC. The province has stated that you can have both revenue tools, ACC and CAC at the same time, as long as you're not double collecting for the same things.
If I could just add to to the answers, I think process wise, we will have to look at uh revising the CAC policy once we have the ACC bylaw adopted to make sure that it's not overlapping.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, yeah, to my mind, it's, it might be important to understand them together. It's a little bit hard for me to wrap my head around them in in isolation. Um and especially if we sort of lose the benefit of ACCs. Uh which is getting rid of the CACs, like how does that impact, you know, what we're achieving for the community? So that's something I'd like to understand. So in your slides, you spoke about some public consultation as well as developer consultation was required for ACCs. Uh so unless I misunderstood, when does that happen? Is this something that requires a public hearing for this bylaw to be passed? Or is there a different public engagement piece in this process?
So through the chair, uh it doesn't require specifically a formal public hearing. It can be a public hearing, uh if that's the wish of council and staff, that uh we have a public hearing on the ACCs. Uh we we already have to have a consultation with the development community as part of the DCC. So we're doing a joint uh consultation of DCCs and ACCs, kind of bring the whole thing together. Um but if uh council wishes to have it in a more public forum, to have a public hearing on uh DCCs and ACCs, you could do that. But we're, our consultation efforts are going to be, well, we're planned for uh addressing the uh development landowners, development stakeholders uh directly.
Okay, um a- and uh two more if I have time, but uh i- in my mind, you know, I think of taxation as being tied to assessed value, for example. And from that perspective, the sort of higher um DCC and ACC rates on single family makes sense. But there's also the other element of per capita infrastructure with the form, which I think is more tied to DCC ACC type charges. I'd also expect it to be higher. Um so with those two things conspiring together, uh have we considered both of those places in figuring out the differential rates for multi-unit versus the single family type forms?
Uh so through the chair, so the DCC legislation and best practices guide really provides the framework for how we calculate the charge and how we allocate the charge between the different land use categories. And so using an equivalent population, really what we want to do is we want the um the capital costs that are, that we're trying to recover are is what's driving how we allocate between the different land uses, right? And so, for example, for roads, we say, well, what's the typical uh amount of trip that's generated from a single family home versus a a townhouse, right? Because that's what's driving the need for the roads. And so we use trip generation. Uh when we're looking at things like uh water and wastewater, we're looking at uh water generation per capita or sewage generation, right? And so we're looking at the, what's driving those capital needs to allocate between the different uses. So unfortunately, because that, we don't look at assessment per se, and and so it's a little bit different. Uh because the value of a home doesn't necessarily dictate the the requirement for infrastructure. Uh but if we use those metrics that are tied to trips and uh per capita usage and such, then we can say, well, uh this type of unit pays this much because they use this much more than a different type of unit on average.
Okay. And then my last question is is a little bit related, because I'm trying to wrap my head around the the per unit or per lot fees, which sort of makes sense for me versus the square foot uh way of calculating for ICI. And especially because when you get into the ACC things, the correlation to, you know, the downstream costs versus a per square foot, like it really seems industry dependent what sort of water or roads you would need or, you know, uh like playgrounds or libraries and so on relating that to residential development. I see a connection there, but based on a square foot of industrial or commercial, it's harder to see that relationship. So I'm just wondering, like, how do we, how do those rates get set? And how do we sort of understand that those make sense?
So through the chair, so similarly, uh we'll use the same type of information. So for roads, we'll use the uh usually the ITE trip generation manual. Uh so Institute of Transportation Engineers put out a manual uh defines the different uh assumption on trips by the different categories of uses, residential and non-residential. So we use those uh trip generation rates for the non-residential as well. Uh similarly for water and wastewater, there's typically, so on uh the residential side, you might determine your needs uh based on a per capita flow. But on non-residential side, a lot of times it's based on the area of a property. And maybe it's, you know, twenty-five cubic meters per hectare for a commercial and thirty-five for industrial on average. Whatever it is, that's how we will calculate the relative share that we're applying to those different land use categories. So it it still is based on uh the use and how much flow for water and wastewater is generated from those use or trips for roads, et cetera.
But I guess just, you know, in my mind, if your industrial business was pallet storage, you're not going to be using anywhere close to the water is if your industrial or your your lot was a, you know, green housing or or, you know, something with high water uses. And so it seems there's a significant disconnect between the class and so this is really a a pretty coarse estimate and and that's just all we have to work with.
Yeah, so through the chair, yeah, so DCCs, um they're a blunt revenue tool, right? It's not as you, it's not as uh scoped and specific as you would like it to be. Um the challenge is, when you're designing the infrastructure, you're looking at, so the master plan and and I'm a non-engineer, so I'll let the engineer speak to the specifics. But when you're looking at determining what infrastructure do you need to build? So how much capital cost does the district need to invest? You're saying, well, that's an industrial plot of land, so we're going to use an assumption of, let's say thirty cubic meters per hectare, right? Whatever that use ends up being, maybe you need it, maybe you don't. Uh but that's your assumption, so that's what's driving the need to pay the money for the infrastructure. So that's what we charge that property on. So unfortunately, it's not, you know, specific, you're right, if you get a warehouse, they have like one toilet, that's all they're using for water and wastewater. Everything else is maybe roads, uh but they're still paying a higher charge on water. And if you have a factory that uses water in the process, they're going to use a lot of water. Uh but unfortunately, the DCC, similar to ACC, it's averaging. So it's really just the average uh amount of usage for the each of those different categories.
Okay, I have councillor Hamilton and then Mayor Hurford.
Yeah, thanks very much. Um I've been looking forward to seeing the ACC uh bylaw come to council. It's really good to see this moving forward. I had a question about, I'm trying to understand uh the numbers a bit. Can you remind me how much of the transportation master plan? What fraction of that was DCC projected to be DCC funded? If we go whole, full plan, no one percent municipal uh municipal assist?
So through the chair, uh so the total gross uh cost estimate was about three hundred and forty million. Uh the DCC recoverable is about two hundred and sixty-eight million.
Okay, so that's, so now I'm I'm struggling to understand here. Uh and maybe, maybe I, maybe I can answer my own question by with your help. What was the water, you know, water plan? Uh so the water DCC. Um we just heard a presentation on a water master plan that was twenty million from DCCs. Is that the twenty million you used or did you use an older number?
Uh so through the chair, I don't have the exact number for water in front of me, but uh we did use the latest and greatest master plan information to prepare the calculations. And so the difference between the gross costs and the what we can recover really gets into the benefit to the existing component or the non-growth component of all the projects. Um for roads, there are some projects that do have grant money allocated to it, so we've assigned those. Um but that's really the big driver is the benefit to existing component.
Right. So could I just ask staff, um did the consultant, you, what what is the consultant referring to as the latest and greatest? What were they given?
Through the chair, uh the the capital plan from the water master plan that was presented earlier today, the uh those projects that were identified as DCC eligible were all provided to uh to Watson in order to incorporate it into this DCC bylaw update.
Oh, okay, great. So then, when I look at, so the transportation master plan is about ten times, a little bit more than ten times the size of the water master plan from a DCC charges perspective. But when I look at the plots, when I look at the graphs, the water component looks like a much smaller component, much smaller than ten percent of the roads component. So if you bring up, I don't know, uh one of the slides, anyways, one of the graphs where you put the development cost charges per unit, the water is much smaller than one tenth of the transportation master plan. What am I missing? Uh if if that should be a factor of ten difference in the cost, why does that not get reflected there? In the difference between the uh water DCC, let's take, take the full forty-three thousand, that little orange band water DCC is much smaller than one tenth of the purple.
So through the chair, uh we could take that away and look into the specifics of that. Um I would think it's uh, I would I would have to take a look and and see what the reasoning is.
All right. Some things that have been pretty uh critical for our community um that I'm concerned may not have been fully uh expressed in our master planning um are things like additional libraries and additional facilities, which, you know, we know we need, but we haven't fully flushed out. So what was the size and cost of the library you used for your ACC estimations?
Uh so through the chair, the uh cost of the library that we used was uh about twenty-seven million dollars was the estimate. Um and so, working with uh, working with district staff to determine what the needs are and what the estimated costs are at this point, uh that's what we've included in the calculations.
And do you have a list of all of the facilities and the estimated costs of those facilities? Because that's really a core piece of what we've run into in our, in the past, at least the what I've seen over the last two years, is that ACC or not ACC, is that uh DCC charges have been insufficient to cover the actual costs of this thing now. And so I I've got some concern or some reservation that we may be missing some things or underestimating some things. So do you have a full list of all the things and all the cost estimates um that were considered for this plan?
Yeah, so through the chair, so at at this point, we have the draft listing of of the capital projects and the estimates to create these calculations. Um and as part of the process of consultation and before we finalize to bring the uh bylaw to council, uh we will be including in a report, the list of projects that comprise uh the calculation of the charge. So we will provide that uh once we've finalized that and got direction from yourselves and from the development stakeholders.
Okay, um, thank you very much. Um that's it for now. I may have another one in a moment.
Thanks, Mayor Hurford, and then councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Um I wondered around the, I think this is maybe something that uh was maybe adjacent to where councillor Hamilton was was asking where. So project goes in the, on the DCC list and with the one percent municipal assist. Um and over time, we accumulate some funds there and then we go to execute that project. Uh if we were missing, i- if not missing, but du- due to um just the complexities, the and market conditions of the day, uh there's a a larger amount is is needed there. Can the DCC, is the intent of the DCC bylaw, and maybe this is like existing conditions already, I'm just trying to make sure I understand this from as many angles as possible. Uh does that cover, you know, payments into uh like servicing a debt associated with something that's already been delivered? Or do we just, or how does that sort of gap get get dealt with? Um I'm just trying to understand how realistic this municipal assist is or if that gap sort of falls to the the community more broadly.
So through the chair, there are a couple of things there. So and this is common across Canada, every municipality and district faces this. Um is that as you go through time, costs increase and recently costs have kind of exploded. Um and so there's a couple of things to do. So first thing is, if we, as part of this process, you have one percent municipal assist factor. So let's say it's a hundred percent growth related project, so ninety-nine percent can be funded from development cost charges. Um then you can fund ninety-nine percent of that. So even if the cost goes up, you can fund ninety-nine percent from development cost charges. What'll happen is, let's say you don't have enough money in the reserve fund, then you can fund it from other sources. So let's say it's a road project, you can fund it from other tax supported reserves and then pay that back as you recover more development cost charges. So it's almost like an internal loan. Uh and so the, what you'll see is the development cost charge reserve fund balance will be a deficit and negative. Um and so if we currently have negative balances, we actually calculate them as a recovery as part of the next DCC bylaw. So we do, we do recover those deficits. Um you can include interest costs as part of debt payments, uh but you do have to get approval from the inspector to do that. And so if there are any projects that we know for sure, yes, we're going to be issuing a debt on this to fund this, to finance this, and we need to include interest costs, we can do so, but we need to get approval from the inspector.
Okay, thank you. Um and I wondered about the, you know, through our budget process, And I wondered about the, you know, through our budget process, we, one of the discussion points is around funding and timing of various master plans. I'll use the Parks master plan as an example. Under this new ACC work, well, do, like, do those projects need to be supported through, by master planning to get them in, have access to that, to that funding model? Like, I just wonder if it's changing the importance of various mass, doing various master plans and keeping those up to date, given the constraints around the funding source?
Yeah, so through the chair, I think it's important to have those projects identified in the master plans to add them to the list, the ACC list, to justify the need for the projects. You don't necessarily need to have them in a master plan, right? The master plans might happen every five, ten years. Ideally, what you'd like to do is you'd like to do the master plan and then update the DCC and ACC bylaw after, so it can align with the master plan that you have. That's a perfect world, it doesn't always work out like that. So if there are projects that do then get identified in between master plans and they can be rationalized through council reports, then you can potentially add them, incorporate them to an ACC bylaw update. But the key is to update the ACC bylaw and the DCC bylaw whenever you know there's significant changes in costs. Because if, let's say, for example, and this happened to a number of municipalities in the province, you know, we did a survey of bylaws in, in the metro Vancouver area, and there were some bylaws that weren't updated since nineteen ninety-three. And so what happens is you identify these projects, the cost, the cost increased exponentially, and then you're not recovering enough, and you're kind of always playing catch up. So if you can get on a frequent, like every five years, updating these, these revenue tools, you'll make sure that you're trying to capture the latest and greatest projects and cost increases.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Stoner?
Thank you, through the chair, a few questions. The first is, I was curious why the landfill expansion wasn't included in the DCC bylaw?
So through the chair, the, so solid waste and landfill expansion is now an eligible service. We were hoping to have the best practices guide, the province is updating that best practices guide, and we're hoping to have it by now, maybe early December, which will give us the guidance on how to, how they would like to see it incorporated. We still can incorporate it, and so what we've done just in the background is just done some quick calculations. So I'm happy to share that with you if you'd like.
I don't think I need the details, but it would be really helpful if we can actually include that by the time the bylaw comes forward, because we know that's a huge cost coming our way and largely driven by growth. So if we can include that in the DCCs, that would be great. My other question is just on the modeling. So there's a section there where the employment-based forecast has a number of employees who are working from home and no fixed place of employment at twelve thousand five hundred. I'm just curious if a larger percentage of those employees are working from home, does that end up impacting how much we anticipate being able to collect? Like, is there, how would that number change the outcome of the model?
So through the chair, when we undertake the DCC and ACC calculations, well, DCC in this case, because it's employment-based, we take out the work at home and no fixed place of work. The work at home employee is already captured on the residential side of things, and the no fixed place of work, they don't have any built form to charge. And so we take them out of the calculations, and you'll see then, when we present the final details of the calculations, we're only looking at the employees in the institutional, industrial and commercial areas.
And then I'm curious, are we able to redistribute the DCC burden across the different land use categories? Or is the municipal assist factor really the only tool that we have to drop down any one category? So if we're concerned about the proposed rates in commercial, for example, can we increase the DCC burden on residential to accommodate a lower DCC burden on the commercial?
So through the chair, unfortunately, no, the legislation doesn't allow. And this question, so two weeks ago, I was presenting a DCC AC workshop for the GFO ABC, and there was a provincial representative there, and someone brought up that exact thing. Can we kind of ship things or, you know, discount, just discount, let's say, commercial or industrial, because it's too high? And it's not allowed under the legislation, unfortunately.
I thought that was the answer, but I need to ask anyways. And then, similar to councillor Hamilton, I think it would be really helpful just to have a list of the projects that have been included in the ACC bylaw, just because this is new, and for us to wrap our heads around what's in there would be helpful. In particular, I am curious about the childcare component. So right now, our CAC policy does try and capture childcare spaces, but they're built in kind by the developer. So are there any childcare, like, our intention isn't to build childcare facilities ourselves. So how do, have we captured that in the ACC bylaw or have we not?
So through the chair, I think we, that's something just like the affordable housing that can continue under the CACs, and so we would keep them separate from ACCs.
And that's helpful, thank you. I think those are all my questions for now, thanks.
Are there any other questions from council? Councillor Hamilton?
Yeah, I think I'm still struggling with understanding the numbers. So I think having a fuller, more wholesome detail on how your model works and how you get these numbers. Because if I take a twenty-seven million dollar library on eleven thousand new homes, new units, I get, you get around two and a half thousand dollars per unit. That's just for the library. When our ACC rates are in the, you know, from nine thousand to seventeen thousand per unit, when the cost is two and a half thousand dollars just for the library, I'm struggling to see how we're, how the numbers work out. These numbers seem low from my rough calculations, but all I can do are rough calculations.
Yeah, so through the chair again, once we've framed those numbers up, happy to provide the details of the capital projects that comprise the charges and the calculations.
Thanks, councillor Anderson?
I would like to move the staff recommendation chair that we receive the proposed development cost charge rates and the proposed amenity cost charge rates for information and direct staff to proceed with stakeholder consultation for these programs respectively.
I think that's a little bit premature. I believe councillor Hamilton has one more question, and I also have a question, but thank you.
Excuse me.
Go ahead, councillor Hamilton.
Quick question, the report talks about, says there's four point nine million square feet gross floor area and non-residential, but everything else is in square meters. Is there a reason for that or just to drive me nuts? Is that?
Through the chair, not to drive you nuts, we'll correct that for future reports to make everything in square meters, just the old habit of using square feet.
Thank you, I just had one quick question. You mentioned specifically not-for-profit and affordable rental housing can have DCCs or ACCs waived or reduced, and I was wondering what happens to any ownership model?
Sorry, to the chair, can you clarify, sorry?
Yeah, sorry, one second, let me just pull it up. In one of your tables, you talk about the legislative framework for DCCs and ACCs for waiving and reducing charges. It includes a not-for-profit rental housing, including supported living housing and for-profit affordable rental housing. But it doesn't mention any ownership model, and I was wondering how ownership model fits into this, this... Yes, sorry, affordable homeownership models.
So to the chair, so this is the wording right from the legislation that says, you know, these are what can be waived or reduced. So I think if we're talking about, so for-profit affordable rental housing, depending on how you define it in your bylaw that will set parameters on how to waive the charges, I think potentially you could waive it for affordable ownership. So if there's an ownership, the challenge is, and this is happening across the country, is how do you, how do you ensure that it remains affordable, right? Like, so you sell a house and it's affordable today, and then two years from now, they sell it and it's no longer affordable, but they got the benefit of having a reduction in their charges, right? So do you enter into an agreement and do you track all those agreements to make sure that they remain affordable for a certain period of time? Could start to get onerous on there.
Just if I might add, we would almost certainly include the definition that it has to be secured through a housing agreement, in which case that would be registered on title and would secure that, and then that would waive that initial DCC and ACC cost.
Okay, perfect, just wanted to make sure that was a consideration. Okay, councillor Anderson, I think we're ready.
I would like to move the staff recommendation.
Seconded by Mayor Hurford, any comments? Councillor Anderson?
Yes, to begin with, we've just been dealing earlier this morning with budget input, and many members of the public, of course, very interested in recreation and cultural amenities. And so Mr Daly's report has amenities included, and there's a few listings, et cetera. So we will, we will be glad to see more detail on that project list, also both for the DCCs and the ACCs, and so will members of the public. I will also be interested to see the report, supporting documents behind both. In some areas, we're really needing to catch up. I noticed that these other communities putting together DCC bylaws have typically a recreation and culture master plan. In fact, a number of communities around B C have such a plan that is rather more modern than ours. The other area I'm interested to see is the projection of growth and the data and the mapping behind that. One of the areas I'm concerned about is that while it's easy to chart or project population-serving commerce and industry, light industrial, it's not so easy to project the episodic growth that can happen when an investor shows up and wants to develop a large plot of land, that type of thing. And so therefore, I'm happy to see that we will be regularly reviewing these bylaws, but nonetheless, it's not very easy to project that growth. And so we'll be interested to see and discuss that information. The issue that's brought up regarding transportation master plan and the targeting sustainable mode share at fifty percent, that comes up under future mode share in the transportation master plan report, I'm hoping that we're going to have an opportunity to give a thorough discussion of that. I'm skeptical, it's based on city Vancouver data and projections of a fifty percent mode share moving towards that. So I'll be looking forward to that discussion. Finally, I hope we'll be able to take advantage of our local Squamish Chamber of Commerce in the stakeholder consultations. It's easy enough for our engineering and planning staff to identify people to talk to among the developers in the development community, but there's lots of miscellaneous stakeholders in the ICI category, and typically they're members of the chamber. And I'm sure that they would be willing to help in some kind of an engagement program or event for a large, large body of their members that may be interested. Thank you.
Thank you, and councillor Pettingill?
Yeah, a couple of things, I think, very happy to have this report. Some good information here. I think public consultation is a real opportunity. In my mind, it's not a public hearing, but I think we always hear over and over again that we don't charge enough or anything for development, and I think it's a real opportunity for the public to be part of understanding what we actually do charge development. And, yeah, I just think it's really useful. And I think in terms of when the public hears like, oh yeah, we did our DCC bylaw, we had consultation with the developers, you know, being able to say we had consultation with the public will, I think, inspire a lot more confidence in the output of this. To my colleague's point, I believe the fifty percent mode shift is not based on Vancouver stuff. As I recall, it was based on if we want to contain our costs and, you know, achieve some of the goals in terms of parking and so on, that people aspire to having availability of some of these things. This is actually what we need to do if we want the other outcomes we've asked for. And I have not, in general, heard the public say they'd like to subsidize or encourage growth or pay for development. So, you know, I would be surprised if we don't hear people expecting us to minimize the taxpayer assist, so one percent, and would probably expect full implementation of our TMP and other infrastructure, you know, basically have development pay the full cost. And if it's really expensive, that's just what it is, and it is what it is. But, you know, we will see, and maybe if we have the public engagement, we'll have that discussion. The final thing, I do really want to understand the relationship between our CAC policy and the new ACC bylaw, and make sure we're maximizing the benefit of ACCs, which I understand is avoiding the money that gets lost to negotiation and uncertainty. And so for keeping CACs, I, part of me wonders, are we better just to update our CAC policy? And maybe we need to capture more, what are we really gaining by having both? That's not fully clear to me, and if, maybe there is a good reason to have both, and I'd like to understand how they interact if we're going to have both. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks very much, happy to hear, hear the updates on what's, what the ACC and DCC bylaw numbers may look like. Although I would like to say that I really do think it's important that we have more complete information. I don't understand how I can move forward to the community confidently saying that we will have, we are putting an ACC number in place that's sufficient to cover our community needs, if I haven't seen what those numbers are. I'm concerned, I have some concern that part of the reason that our transportation master plan dominates the, the numbers is because the transportation master plan is the most recent and therefore the most realistic in terms of cost, and that all their plans are simply out, more out of date. And I fully recognize both the cost and work required to update all those plans. So I do see the catch-22 here. I'm reading the Local Government Act on this, on the ACCs. I noticed that section five seventy point seven, subsection seven, says that the local government must make available to the public on request the considerations, information and calculations used to determine the schedule referred to in subsection one, which is basically the schedule of the ACC bylaw. So I really hope that before this comes back to council for any further consideration, we have that, and before public feedback, that we have that full information available on how it was, how these numbers were arrived at? Because I don't understand how our public could possibly give feedback on these numbers if they don't have the detail behind. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Mayor Hurford.
Thank you, speaking in support of the motion, just thank you for all the work to get us this far. I think the, one of the biggest changes is this ACC work, and I think, I think it's great that we have a tool now, or close at hand anyways, with, that represent, that acknowledges the impact of, of development on land that's already zoned for a higher use. So anything that, that, that adds humans and impact to a property gets captured here with the, with the ACCs. So I think that's remarkable, and particularly with the other housing changes that we, that we've been seeing. I do think that the CACs still have a place in those rezoning discussions as well. And, and I think that, as much as it's important to see where they fit together, in some conversations, the CAC policy just won't apply because it is that existing zoning that's maybe adding a laneway house or something like this. So I would like to have them kind of come close together, but I think they, one applies exclusively in one situation, one apply, and then both apply in another, in another context. So I don't know that they need to come all, all together, but at some point, we'll need to look at that, impact of that, and it's, it's an entirety. I think, I share concerns around costing, that's why I was asking some of those questions earlier, and how, you know, when that doesn't, not when it doesn't go right, but just to the nature of the complexity of these things, that if, if that's, those assumptions are, aren't all the way there. I think it's important that we understand how those things come together. And I think if we're going to, having conversations with the public around what's eligible in these cases and what's driven by growth and what's portion of maybe the same project, isn't a growth piece, but just a end of service life of a, of a but just a end of service life of a, of a facility and then not eligible for the D, DCCs. Separating that out from the municipal assist, I think is really like, it's a, it's a complex piece that I have a hard time sort of, uh, articulating as well. So I think this is a specific piece of communication, um, as you go forward to consult with the, with the, with the public on, on these rates. But, uh, I'm, I'm confident we're moving in, um, in the right direction here. And I look forward to, uh, next steps as some of these pieces are a little bit more flushed out, but thank you very much for the work.
Thank you, Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, short and sweet. I am supportive of everything we've received today. And I think that one of the most important parts of, uh, this process is the stakeholder consultation that we're entering into. And I'm looking forward to the feedback we get from that.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, Chief of Chair. Uh, thanks for the work to date. I think that this is a good starting point for the conversation. Always happy to see when we're updating this bylaw, um, so that we make sure that we are as relevant as possible in terms of our revenue models. Cause we have been found in positions where we have projects that haven't quite, or they've exceeded our DCCs that we've recovered to date. A few things that I'm reflecting on, um, generally supportive of the direction, the component for commercial and to a lesser extent, industrial and institutional do give me elements of pause, um, they are really high. The commercial especially is almost three times greater than next highest community. Uh, and we know that that is already really, really expensive, uh, real estate to build. It's hard for our business community to move into. And if we increase those DCC rates, those will get passed down. Um, so I am curious about what a municipal assist factor would look like there, um, knowing that, uh, making that sort of, uh, employment space available to our community is, is a core part of our work going forward. Um, so I'm, we'll look forward to hearing from our community. And I think the Chamber of Commerce is, is a great addition to the list of consultation. Um, on consultation, DCCs are extremely dry, but I swear, I think if we put out a webinar called, how and how much developers pay for community amenities, might actually be one of the most highest attended webinars. Um, because as Counselor Anderson said, we just came out of budget engagement. And one of the things that we hear over and over again is developers need to pay more. And so, um, I would encourage our staff to consider doing a little bit more broader education slash consultation with the community around how we set these rates and what it means. And title it something really snatchy like that, that responds to the feedback that we've heard. Um, and other than that, uh, I will leave my comments there for now and look forward to this coming back again with a little bit more detail, especially on the ACC list of projects, um, because that's just a new area for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. And just to add a couple of comments of my own, um, thank you so much for all the hard work. Uh, I, I, I think it'd be pretty hard to dig this hard into DCCs myself, but, uh, yeah, happy to support the repeated, the receipt of these reports. I want to echo some of the concerns mentioned today. I'm also very concerned that our DCCs are not covering the cost of growth. And I look forward to seeing more information around the forecasted project cost allocations relative to the predicted DCC, um, income. Of course, DCCs are often seen as free money, but in actuality, it's passed down to the consumer and impacts our housing prices. I very much like Counselor Stoner's idea about a webinar, a webinar. Um, and I also have, I want to echo some of Counselor, um, Pettingill's concerns about the overlap and efficiency of having the ACC and C A C policy and what we can do there to kind of tighten up that. Uh, and I, I look forward to seeing the stakeholder, uh, what comes out of the stakeholder engagement piece. Um, but thank you for all your whole, hard work. And with that, I called a question. All in favor? That's unanimous. So thank you. And we now have a 15 minute break, so let's reconvene at 4:45.
Okay, welcome back to our meeting today. Next, we're going to talk about the Oceanfront Marine Employment Amendment. And that will be presented by Ms. Fletcher and Mr. Villanischka.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jessie Fletcher, manager of current planning. With me today is Jonas Villanischka, Senior Director of Community Development. And this afternoon, I'm introducing an application to amend three bylaws to permit the development of a mixed use district on the Squamish Oceanfront. So staff is here to ask for committee feedback on the proposal and have specifically highlighted the proposed parking ratio, uses and amenities as areas of focus for feedback. The location of the proposal is on the Squamish Oceanfront Peninsula. Land use on the peninsula is covered by the sub area plan and appendix to the official community plan, the extent of which is shown on the top left image on the slide. You'll note on the image to the top right, the extent of the Squamish Oceanfront that is zoned in alignment with the sub area plan. And the subject proposal is located in block C and partially in block I, as shown on the lower image highlighted in bright blue. While the Oceanfront Peninsula has a long history, this slide very briefly summarizes important milestones as it relates to the sub area specifically. The sub area planning process occurred over a long timeframe and was completed in 2010. The land was rezoned to the CD 69 zone as the sale of the land. So the developer was occurring along with the negotiation and adoption of the phase development agreement. A sub area plan amendment was also completed during this time that significantly added language to the plan to reconcile some inconsistencies within the plan. The first development permit was issued in 2016 and was amended to permit a second DP for the carbon engineering development in 2020. In 2018, a narrow suite of amendments was given third reading by council but was not adopted. Instead, these were rolled into a comprehensive amendment in 2021 that also dedicated public roads, reallocated density loss through the dedication of land to public roads, and revisited setbacks. In 2021 and 2022, council approved three separate development permits on the Oceanfront Peninsula. There's one other active zoning amendment in the area known as the BCR rezoning. This rezoning seeks to align lands outside of the phase development agreement area, a CD 69 zone area with a sub area plan. Given the scale of the plan and amenity package, it has been on hold since 2022. This slide highlights the subject project in the greater context of approvals on the Oceanfront Peninsula. And the image shows all of the approved development permits, some of which have been constructed, others which still await issuance. The waterfront employment block known in the zone as block C and within the sub area plan as waterfront employment is located on the northwest portion of the peninsula along the Catamaran Slough, located north of Spock West Feather Park, south of urban engineering into the west of both residential one and office one. The applicant proposes to amend the sub area plan and zone to permit a mixed use district, which would include 207 rental units, 20% of which would be three bedroom units, all of which would be secured as rental tenure in the zone and with a housing agreement that limited rental to those employed within Squamish. The intent here is to first offer this housing to those who work downtown and on the Ocean Road Peninsula before extending the reach of this further out. The applicant is proposing to amend the employment uses for marine employment and marine accessory use to light industrial uses generally. While staff have historically significantly reduced accessory uses in light industrial areas, given the urban location of the zone, staff are not recommending a restricted approach. The application contemplates one indoor climbing facility. However, its final location has not been confirmed. In the proposal before council today, you'll note that the location is in block I within the park. Given the need to secure a public art use at this location as well as childcare, its final location may be relocated elsewhere on site. The Oceanfront's parking standards are the same as those that apply outside of the downtown. The applicant is proposing to lower their parking ratio to be consistent with the parking ratio recently established at Waterfront Landing. This ratio would still be higher than the downtown rate of one stall per unit, but slightly lower than the community wide ratio. The ratio for employment uses would remain the same. The sub area plan contemplates a marine employment use at this location. The sub area plan cites uses such as boat building, sales and leasing and repair and maritime related uses, community arts facilities, duty free export, a boat launch, cruise ship terminals, marinas and above ground floor residential that is compatible with light industrial uses. During the master planning process and development of the Catamaran Shoreline with carbon engineering, it has become apparent that the area is insufficiently deep or wide to accommodate a boat launch. This is further exacerbated by the fact that flood construction level accounts for sea level rise and raises land significantly as it relates to the high watermark. The original plan had anticipated that any flood protection works would not apply to this type of use. The sub area plan did anticipate that the amount of land provided for this use may exceed the demand. The sub area plan had contemplated an expansion of non marine related light industrial uses in this location. Finally, while significant residential use was not proposed in this location initially, no affordable or rental housing was proposed or secured on the entirety of the Oceanfront Peninsula. Diverse types of housing tenure is an essential element of a complete community, allowing opportunities for diverse cross section of the population to live and work in the same area. Staff are proposing an amendment to the sub area plan that would not require an OCP amendment for any rezoning proposing affordable or rental housing in the future. Prior to finalizing the zoning for this parcel, it would be prudent to explore having a flexibility to allow an expanded list of light industrial uses to complement marine activity. In addition, some residential multi unit developments of the northern portion of the area adjacent to the education and institution area may be appropriate should the primary marine employment use not be sufficient in this area. The sub area plan contemplated civic uses in the spots outlined in red on the plan with community open space located in the dots in green. The area adjacent to the Marine Employment Center was contemplated as a civic use such as performing arts center. This area is zoned block I in the CD 69 zone and permits this use. However, this amenity was not secured in the phase development agreement. The sub area plan also allows for such a facility to be located elsewhere on site, including within the park. The developer installed the infrastructure and designed the park to facilitate an outdoor theater which has been used as part of their annual festival. The applicant proposes to utilize this area to support some of the needs identified by Squamish Arts and their Space Needs Study, such as use for an artist in residence, a studio and/or community gallery space, in addition to the provision of a childcare facility, another needed amenity given that was not secured anywhere in the Oceanfront Peninsula. Given this context, staff suggest this is a reasonable proposal. The application does not trigger the community amenity policy as the only residential use proposed is rental. Given that an OCP amendment is triggered, the applicant is proposing to construct 28 childcare spaces, contribute a public art amenity and deliver rental housing. Following council feedback today, staff will work with the applicant to finalize a proposal and finalize draft amendment bylaws. A referral will be sent to Squamish Nation. Once all outstanding issues are finalized, staff will bring forward the bylaws for council consideration. So staff recommend that council accept the report and provide feedback specifically as it relates to parking ratio, uses and amenity package, and then direct staff to bring forward the bylaws for first and second reading.
Thank you for the presentation. Before we get started on questions, I just want to comment that Councilor Stoner is joining us remotely for this last piece. And again, I just want to remind council that we'll, that staff will be looking for direction with regards to parking ratios, proposed uses and proposed amenity packages. Are there any questions from council? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. A theme that our planner Sarah McJanet touches on in probably in the preamble of each of her reports during recent years is that we need a proactive strategy for waterfront land uses. Perhaps we might have made different decisions 10 and 20 years ago had we known the kind of constraints we are facing today. The what can and where, what can go where and where, what should go where on our waterfront? The current report to council states that, to quote, "Key findings from a marine sector impact study may compel a review of marine based employment land in the Oceanfront Subarea Plan" that are currently not within the CD 69 zone and phase development agreement. My question is, and we are going to be contemplating an OCP review, an updating upcoming, in fact, within a few years, maybe another more fuller review. Can we address this matter of reserving opportunity for alternate waterfront uses in a, one of these upcoming OCP updates?
Through the chair. Thank you for that question. Certainly it's something we can address in one of the future OCP updates. It really is dependent on the work that needs to happen through the marine sector impact strategy that's currently not in the financial plan. But if that work was to reappear in the future, it would inform a review of potential marine employment locations, but that work does need to come first.
Thank you. That leads to my next question. Can staff provide an update on the status of the marine sectors impact study? And whether a proposed geographic scope in terms of reference for the study might be brought before council when we're ready for that?
Through the chair, at this time, there is no work underway as part of the strategy.
Thank you. I'll follow up with a couple more questions. During 2021, that's already three years ago, during the marine zoning, council decided to reserve the outer end of the Catamaran Slough as Marine One, M1 zoning, Marine General, rather than follow the recommended P4 ecological reserve zone. And the reason why, as I recall, is that council wanted to keep some options open. There were some uncertainties about the uses in the adjacent lands on the oceanfront southwest corner there. And so we also, and I was listening in on the advisory design panel, and it was brought forward that a lot of these studies about waterfront uses on the oceanfront that's literally, to quote, fell short. So where we are today, we have some uncertain, I have some uncertainties about this southwest corner, I'll call it the air block or lot, lot four. It's come under different names, block C. Because from my experience, you can get by without a ramp, you can have a lift. We're going to dredge one way or another. We're in a delta. There is no deep water in Squamish. We, there may be other handicaps elsewhere to face as well. So I would like to be more comforted. I would like to be comforted that before we make this decision to change the use here. And so in light of these considerations or questions, I wonder if we can, going forward, produce some better detail, illustrated detail regarding the assumed handicaps of the Oceanfront Block C for marine light industrial or marine center, if you like, uses relative to other locations in the Blind Channel West Side. And maybe that we're going, coming back to the marine sectors impact study, but I feel that we need that kind of detail. And I wonder if staff can comment on the opportunity to have it brought before council?
Through the chair, we can certainly produce something in more detail or more detailed regarding this. We, we can also address some of the issues that were brought up today, including dredging, which at this location is not recommended because of the contaminants in the soil. And we also know that the economic viability of marine employment use wouldn't less, not necessarily support a boat lift at this location. So there are certainly many factors to consider, and we can certainly produce a more detailed report moving forward.
Thank you for that. And that detail would be, would be, I'm sure other parties may be interested as well and be much appreciated. Finally, I cannot help but reflect on back in 2015, when the oceanfront bylaws were coming forward, the key theme of concern on the part of neighboring waterfront industry was neighborhood interface. And in the present report, I noticed under policy, there's a part of the official community plan, policy sections that is missing. And I do advise that we should retrieve it and include it for next time, and that is land use compatibility, section 14.3, 14.4. And it addresses looking after neighborhood interface concerns on the part from an industry perspective. My question though, is given that industry at that time, Squamish terminals and the forest industry largely, but with a number of other supporters, including provincial government agencies, they were concerned about the covenants that the district was proposing. And they, they did not and do not meet the same standards as are expected in the lower mainland. And two examples that were given in detail at the time were North Vancouver and Richmond. So my question is, should we take the opportunity to review and reconsider the currently registered two covenants? Section 219 Oceanfront Neighborhood Interface Covenants. There's one applying to lot four and another one on the easterly side of the peninsula. But just so that we can check in again, because we have evolving demands and needs with neighborhood interface. And, and maybe this, this might be advisable. I'll just leave that as my question. Thank you.
Through the chair. Thank you for that question. Certainly we can explore revisiting those covenants with the applicant. They have expressed openness towards exploring them again on block C specifically. We'd also highlight that for this zoning specifically, we're looking at acoustic requirements for the units to help better protect against noise pollution from adjacent uses. And then we are also aware that lighting at the terminals has been changed to more night friendly and lower, lower lumens. So the, the interface impacts have also been mitigated and reduced over time.
Thank you. I'm also aware that the applicant has related that there's new experience that's been gained on the Oceanfront Peninsula with buildings that have been erected and also with carbon engineering, which is another part of the, part of the landscape there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Councilor Hamilton next.
Yeah, thanks very much. I assumed that, I would have assumed that in the marine employment zone, there'd be a, there would be the possibility of a marine fueling station, a boat refueling station. I've heard, I'm not a boater myself, but I've heard concerns and challenges that folks need to either boat down to Horseshoe Bay or somewhere Lions Bay to fill up their boat, and that boaters here need to fill up jerrycans to fill up their boats, which seems like a, I don't know, not a great way to go. Is this potentially removing a fueling station? I would assume if there's marine employment, maybe I'm not correct there, that there would be also a potential for a fueling station? Is there anywhere on the oceanfront here plans that for marine fueling? And are we losing that opportunity here?
I'll ask Sarah McJanet, Senior Planner with the district, to help answer this question as the marine zoning expert.
Thanks so much, Council. Sal, how did I? When we did the marine zoning update in 2021 to 2022, we identified marine fueling as an accessory component of marina. And it's actually, there's conditions of use and a specificity around where that occurs in the Mamquan Blind Channel, south of the Victoria Street right of way, where the future pedestrian, pedestrian bridge will be built. So it's connected to the marina use as a principal use. And it's currently situated within the Mamquan Blind Channel where the M2 zones are, are located along the foreshore.
Great. So there are, there is zoning for marine.
That's correct. And because we've specified it within the marine zone, within M2, it's not broadly allowed everywhere. It's very specific to that M2 zone.
Perfect. Thanks. Second question, why was the climbing gym highlighted? Is that part of the zoning package or is it just a, you know, maybe there's a business that they want to put in there? I, what, why, why did the climbing gym come out as a point to highlight?
Thank you for that question through the chair. The indoor recreation use would permit a climbing gym. Both requires a specific use to be added to the zoning, which we would not want to apply broadly in a light industrial zone. It also requires a higher height than a normal light industrial four story building. So it was important to highlight. Originally, if you review the drawing package, it was located adjacent to the park. And the developer initially proposed that as, as a feature to this rezoning to consider. That location is not determined at this time.
Okay. And is that considered, is that to be considered as some kind of amenity? Or is it just a business that they're making space for? And I don't, I'm not implying that there is a specific business, but.
Through the chair, it is not considered an amenity, but rather a feature of the zoning.
Okay, thanks. Next question is about, so the, the original zoning was 100% employment land, no residential land. And now we've got 200 residential units in the land. How much employment is left? I don't have a good sense of what this turns, how that turns the ratio. So how much employment do we lose? How much employment land do we use? So how much employment do we lose? How much employment land do we use when we add the 200 residentials?
Through the chair, thanks for that question. It's, it's not, you're not necessarily losing employment land, it's changing the density of employment and the type of jobs. So marine employment use likely would include a lot of outdoor space or similar to a medium industrial use. Generally with a lower employee ratio than a lighter industrial use. The light industrial use is what you would see in the business park typically, or the mud one zoning. But then with residential on top, so it's, it's, it's not decreasing the employment at all. Rather, it's increasing residential, but it is changing the nature of the employment.
And my next question is about carbon engineering. That's a industrial zone and, and they do make noise right next to a residential zone. Is the site that carbon engineering is currently on, is that zoned industrial? And will it, is it foreseen to continue that way with residential beside it?
The carbon engineering site is zoned C1, so it's still within the same block and it is zoned for the use. It is also zoned for more residential uses. So it could, more diverse of residential uses than what is proposed in Block C at this time. So it could change in the future. Again, that is largely the push for the acoustic requirements within the residential units, because carbon engineering, the site does produce some noise at some times. My understanding, not continuous, but at times. So that would help improve the interface between the uses. There's also a 10-meter statutory right of way between the two uses as well. That does provide a bit more distance than you typically say, see between buildings in the zone or on the site generally.
And my last question, you didn't talk about it in the slides, but you spoke, it was spoken to in the staff report, which was a bioinventory had been, this is the last sentence. A site bioinventory has been requested for the site as well as a site-wide bioinventory. So just clarification, what's the difference between a site bioinventory and a site-wide bioinventory? And yeah, let's start with that.
Yeah. So through the chair, the site bioinventory is specific to site Block C and will help inform the rezoning and siting of uses based on what may be there, of which we expect there to be not much. But it would identify if there was like a bird's nest or something that we need to be aware of during the course of construction and/or when you're considering the siting of certain uses. The site wide establishes a baseline for the site overall. There hasn't been one done. So as development came online, or they went through development permits, we could update the site-wide site bioinventory. The rezoning gives us some ability to ask for that, which is above and beyond, which we typically ask for a site-specific rezoning.
Okay. So their request for rezoning one small piece of the property has resulted in us requesting a bioinventory for the entire peninsula effectively?
Through the chair, that's correct.
And when does a site bioinventory, so I, I'm imagining bioinventories, I imagine them for greenfield sites, right? We want to know what's there so that we know what's valuable. This site seems very different from that. This is a formerly industrial land that the developer themselves had to do a ton of cleanup. So what's the rationale for a bioinventory? Like your example of a bird's nest, the bioinventory is going to happen long before any construction, these, before these actually get constructed. So the bio situation is going to change anyways at the level of bird's nests. So what's, what's the motivator? I'm trying to understand the motivation for the bioinventory in this case. I do understand why it's important in a general sense, particularly for greenfield, but for this case.
So the province does put out guidelines and best practices for developing a site bioinventory. In this case, we recognize that the site is a groundfield site. However, because it has been idle for many years in some areas, there may still be some environmental values. A groundfield site doesn't preclude environmental values from establishing and/or locating. It also helps identify where there may be invasives. It basically streamlines the environmental department's work moving forward as permits come in. So, and they're, they're less, it would be less work to do than for a greenfield site, for example. So it felt like irrational, let's set a baseline to understand if there are any environmental values there or things that have changed, then we can measure over time as development proceeds.
Okay, thanks. And I know that in, in previous, in, in other sites, we've seen differences between, there's been challenges with bioinventory. The accepting the bioinventory report from a qualified QEP. And so I assume that, that means there's, and the explanation to me was that the district has a certain set of standards and that it wasn't, they weren't being met. Does this, can we avoid that situation where we can clearly communicate our standards of, our standards required for the bioinventory? So that we don't have a situation where the bioinventory done by a QEP, you know, needs to be accepted by the district staff. I know there's a level where the district staff needs to accept it, but I'd like to try to avoid a situation where the developer gets into a situation with a, with a, you know, maybe they hired a consultant that didn't do the job right. How can we help prevent that kind of friction?
Thank you through the chair. The, I think the site referring to is quite different. It's a mostly greenfield site with a lot more values, environmental values. So it was very unique in, in, in terms of process as well. I think we definitely learned from that process, and I don't think that's, there's a risk of that happening here.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Penn Gill. And then I have Mayor Herford.
Yeah. And I, I think you did touch on this, but I, I was momentarily distracted. I, I just want to clarify, business and professional office minor and interpretive center are two uses that did not carry over. And I'm just curious as to why those, those aren't included in the, in the new zoning, proposed zoning.
Thank you through the chair. At this time, there are other locations of the oceanfront that permit business or professional office minor. Typically, those uses are an accessory to light industrial uses where they are both permitted the same thing. We often see competition between those uses. We were looking to preserve specifically light industrial uses here. Those would also permit some marine adjacent uses in theory. So it would preserve the overall intent of the sub-area plan. The interpreter center didn't carry over because again, it didn't, in analysis of the industrial zoning, didn't seem that it was, it didn't, I'm missing the word here, but didn't get along as well with the light industrial use. We wouldn't want to put other constraints on the light industrial use.
Okay, thank you. I have Mayor Herford.
Yeah, thank you. So the proposed parking ratios, we've run into this a few times where the downtown standard is, is really low. And then we have these sort of interface areas that are approaching, approaching that. I appreciate that for a, you know, sort of a desktop exercise using fractions of a parking spot are helpful. But how, how do those end up getting distributed or assigned to the, to the units? Given that, you know, there's not 0.5 or 0.75 of a vehicle using them.
Thank you through the chair. That is at the determination of the strata or final owner. At the end of the day, the staff and the zoning bylaw don't regulate after the use has been occupied and who gets what.
Okay. So those could be distributed through any number of means and it's silent on that. So they could be assigned to, like separately from the, from the actual, like if someone in a one bedroom required two spots, that could be something that could be accommodated through, through it and vice, and vice versa. Just it would be up to the strata to do that?
Correct.
Okay. I noticed a note from the ADP, and I've heard this from the community. Some desire for overheight parking, particularly overnight as, as folks work in fields that have often require a larger, a larger vehicle or sprinter or something like that. It doesn't necessarily fit in, in the covered spaces. Have we, have we contemplated how we would achieve that other here or, or elsewhere?
Through the chair, that's a really good question. So again, that's sort of where the zoning ends and then the ownership begins. In this specific case, we have contemplated ensuring that some of the accessibility solids were at grade. There is some parking at grade, while a lot of it is underground. Those, knowing that many with accessibility challenges do require larger vehicles, we wanted to ensure that those were secured. The other alternative would be to secure some at grade for overnight residential, but that would need to be managed by the strata. So it's sort of where our, our powers would end at that point in time.
Okay. I guess, how does, I know we're, it feels like we're not varying the parking requirements for the commercial use, for the commercial use. So we're not really, it's not really part of the discussion. But I'd like to, I think in a future presentation, have these all sort of come together. Because I understand why we're not talking about the pieces we're not changing. But when you look at a sort of a finished product to the, to the public, I think it'll be important to represent what's there and what those requirements are. So I'm, I think I'm, I'm happy with the, with the ratios as, as proposed here. I do think that this overheight parking, particularly overnight, is something that, if it doesn't live with us, that the, the proponent or subsequent strata may need to give some attention to. As I look at our overflow areas and they're often full of things that just don't fit. And it's not practical to require the, the height to do, to do so. And, but I understand we wouldn't necessarily mandate that at this, at this point, but there's probably a path through there. Also, and similarly to the, to not speaking about the things that we're not changing, I think that the, like highlighting the specific measures or covenants, which we've heard a little bit about here, to minimize the negative impact from the industrial uses on residential and, and vice versa, as far as, you know, complaints, potential complaints curbing the, their ability to do that, their desired activities there. I think that would be something that's really important to highlight. And then we can understand how impactful it is. It didn't really jump at me from any of the things that I, that the documentation that was, that was provided. But I know that they're, that they're, they're out there, but I'd really like to understand that. And, and I'm sure the, I'm assuming the public would as well. I would take some comment on that at this point, if you have, if you have comments on what protections do exist there as far as, or commitments exist. And given that we're changing the use there, I know that we weren't contemplating that interface on that particular parcel for this, to the industrial use, to the, particularly the one existing to the, to the north and, and I guess across the channel as well.
Through the chair. So to comment on what the specific, there is an industry covenant registered on the oceanfront. And within it, it indemnifies the district against harm from things like, and advises those moving in regarding the presence of noise, vibration, dust, light, odor, and other disturbances that are, that could occur at all hours of the day and in volumes that would exceed your normal residential neighborhood. So that's the existing covenant that is on title, also restricts casino use and some other uses that we may not, that are not contemplated in the zoning right now, but does protect in the future from those uses as well.
So do we have any input into mitigation measures in the structure? Like I, I heard a little bit about some soundproofing and some of the comments earlier, but yeah, or what commitments do we have that these will be? I know everyone's trying to do the best that they, they can with this. This is the comment, it's not anything but that. But how, how do we ensure that or show that we're protecting the interests of the residents that are going to be there? Because particularly now that in the rental context, where I think the covenant alone is very, is great on the ownership side, but is, it's sort of a few layers deeper than your general tenant that's going to show up to rent one of these units.
Thank you through the chair. So certainly the acoustic requirements is the thing that has been identified by staff as the most actionable and thing that can go in, within the zoning. We've done that on other sites on the oceanfront as well and at Hunter Place, I believe. And I know the developer has other mitigation ideas in terms of protection from wind on patios and light spill through windows. We can certainly discuss that with the applicant and come back at readings with a covenant that either seeks to secure those things or have more information for council.
Yeah, thank you.
Add to that, I think the other aspect that we've had experienced now since, since 2015 is the mixed-use district in the business park. That's a similar situation where you have mostly rental stock, new rental stock. You know, it's next to the rail line, it's in the business park. And we haven't had any issues in terms of residential versus industry interface there. There are some acoustic requirements on some of those properties, and that seems to be perhaps maybe what, what is working. So this would be a similar setup.
Okay. And maybe these actions are already something that, you know, the proponents looking at, at, at doing to ensure that they're, they're marketable and so on. So I'd just like to sort of cap, capture that and, and make sure that that's appropriate for, for the interface. But yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor French and then Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, Chair. I want to dig a little deeper into the acoustic requirements. And my original question was around real world experience leading to the numbers. I want some reassurance that we just didn't get a dartboard and go, okay, 40 decibels for the living room. So how were those numbers arrived at? It sounds like the business park experience may have played some part in that.
Thank you through the chair. And this will challenge my memory a bit. So we first came up with these numbers through the experience rezoning Hunter Place, which is quite adjacent to the highway. There are certain noise tenures by room that are recommended as like this decibel shouldn't be exceeded. Or, and this is the noise generated by these uses. Similar zoning bylaws, for example, in the city of North Vancouver also apply these. So we did look at those as well. So there was a bit of what are other municipalities who are building in noisy locations doing? And also what do the experts that we can find say about this? And then landed on those numbers. So no dartboards.
Yeah, good. Okay. Data and science. Love it. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner.
Chair, thanks to staff for the presentation. Interesting proposal. A few questions. On the proposal for rental housing and it being allocated to local workforce or it being workforce housing, how is this envisioned that it would be managed over time? Who is responsible for ensuring that that person still works in Squamish, that they work downtown? And if they change jobs, they, who evicts them? Or do they get evicted?
Thank you through the chair. So as with all of our rental housing agreements, it does fall to the developer to, or ultimate owner to manage these units and the residency requirement. Within these covenants, the district has the ability to pull the, the rental records and/or have a report from the owner on an annual basis, which we do in certain circumstances. And it does of course raise some challenges with if somebody was to lose employment. I believe that there are in the, in the affordable housing agreements, which this will be integrating both our rental and our affordable housing, some safeguards and amounts of time and hours, which are less than full-time to help prevent from immediate eviction. But Mr. Bellis just will add to that.
Thank you. We are currently in discussions with Housing Squamish about potentially providing a service to the district where Housing Squamish would be reviewing statute declarations, which we get from privately owned affordable housing developments. And we don't have a lot of them yet. Most are either in pre-development or in construction phase. But this could potentially play into that as well. And we'll be bringing that agreement to, to council in a few weeks, I believe.
Okay, that's helpful to hear. And I think just something that is worth some further consideration and ongoing dialogue, both with Housing Squamish, the community and. is worth some further consideration and ongoing dialogue, both with Housing Squamish, the community and council. If that's something that we really want to be enforcing, I think the idea of workforce housing sounds really good in theory, and then in practice, it gets really hard to actually implement. And I don't know if even like the district wants to be moving people out of housing simply because they've lost a job or they've changed jobs and they are now no longer their job is no longer in downtown. It's in Brackendale and does that mean that they're no longer eligible? And so I think for me, it raises a lot of questions on how effective this actually is. And if there's a better way to actually achieve the outcome of trying to deliver affordable housing for our community. And so if some of these units are actually at market and then a portion of them are dedicated to the housing society or are held just at below market as opposed to at market rental for all of them. So I would like to explore that conversation a little bit more if we are going to contemplate putting that much residential on this site. My other question, I'll hold my comments is a question around the uses. So commercial recreation and indoor recreation are there. I understand that fitness center is not, but to me, maybe the question is, can staff differentiate what those uses would allow? I'm just trying to think of some of the lessons learned through the business park. If you go there at 7:00 PM, it the parking lots are still full. In part because of the climbing gym as well as some of the fitness centers. And so do we actually expect with the inclusion of indoor recreation as is zoning use that shared parking for visitor and commercial is a legitimate approach here?
Through the chair, as it relates to indoor recreation and fitness centers, indoor recreation is sort of the the higher use and a fitness center would fit within that use. So it's a parent use. In this location specifically, indoor recreation is limited to one such use. We're not proposing to allow that use broadly across the zone at this time. Commercial recreation, Mr. Villas is just pulling that up for me. But it is a use providing for outdoor recreation and adventure tourism facilities, accessible retail sale and services, customer healing incidentals as such. So it's more of a tourism support or outdoor recreation support use as opposed to an indoor facility for like such as a gym or something that would fit under the indoor recreation use more generally.
Okay, that's a helpful response. I'll think on that a little bit. And then I guess my follow up question there in terms of like the parking ratios or the parking provided. I think I read in the report that the proposal is that there's shared visitor parking with the commercial parking. And given those uses and we know the hours of those types of operations often extend beyond nine to five. Is that shared use for parking feasible, given the uses proposed?
Uh, thank you for the chair. I through the chair. I cannot answer whether or not it's feasible, given that that's outside of my area of expertise. However, I would say again, because the use is limited to one such use as opposed to being broadly permitted across the site. And it does deliver quite a high parking ratio as compared to a light industrial use. So when the light industrial buildings, for example, in the I zone were produced and their parking was calculated, it was calculated on the light industrial use of one stall per hundred square meters where an indoor recreation use calls for three stalls for a hundred square meters. So in this case, we would be allocating that amount of stalls to this specific use. There may, of course, be some conflict between that and users over time. Parking conflicts seem to arise in all situations. However, given that the majority of the site would be light industrial use primarily, that use typically in our understanding of it occurs between sort of seven to three or an eight to four hours. So we think that there would be some they would get along.
Okay, that's helpful. And then the last thing that I picked up in my staff report is that there's no proposal for any outdoor amenity space for the housing component. And the justification is that it's next to a very large and beautiful park, which I do appreciate. But it still feels challenging to provide housing that doesn't have access to their own outdoor space. So there's yes, there's a big shared public outdoor space right there, but it's not necessarily somewhere that they can go and host an event for them within their community. And so I'm just curious for our staff support for that move.
Uh, thank you through the chair. Again, given the location, staff felt that it was appropriate. Here we are exploring other opportunities for indoor space for the units. There is no indoor space requirement for these units in the oceanfront zone as they are part of a different zoning bylaw than the one that we regularly see at council because of the phase development agreement. So to offset the lack of outdoor space, we are exploring other opportunities for indoor space. We do know in some rental buildings in other municipalities, they are waiving the requirement for both indoor and outdoor space. We're looking for a happy medium to acknowledge that there is no rental housing on the oceanfront at this time and staff do feel there is a strong need to diversify the tenure of housing out there to allow for different tenures over time.
For now, thanks, Chair.
Thanks. I have a few questions of my own. I was just wondering, you mentioned parking ratios and I was wondering if staff could clarify what the parking ratio is in the rest of waterfront landing and the ratio in the community wide that you mentioned.
So I'll just see if I can pull up this slide. Uh, thank you for your patience. So on this slide, you can see the number in the center column is the proposed parking ratio and the one on the right in the parentheses is the existing parking ratio, and that is the one that applies to community wide based on this type of use per unit.
Thanks. And then in the amenities, it has listed motor vehicle repair and service shop. And I was just wondering what that might look like. Is that supposed to be like a marine usage motor motor vehicle repair? Or is it supposed to be like a new auto shop or what?
Um, thank you. One of the things that staff have heard over the years is that there is tension about some of these uses and not zoning for them specifically. This use wouldn't fit in the light industrial zone, but could use a light industrial bay to operate. So permitting it in this area seemed logical, given that it is a light industrial area or proposed to be a light industrial area.
Okay, thanks. And then the other piece was, it says proposed uses as accessory uses. I was wondering if staff could expand on that. But also indicate how that's different from the use of accessory.
Thank you for that question. So accessory uses basically refer to any use that is subordinate to and normally incidental to a principal use. Normally in light industrial zoning, specifically in the business park, we do set quite strict parameters about how much floor area can be used for which use. And that is really reflective of our continued and evolving understanding of how light industrial uses are operating. So they don't operate the way that we would have historically or the way the zoning was originally built to use. They need more showroom space and or office space and or retail space to support their uses. This is what we've heard when we've gone to industry events and or research specifically with the, I think, the 2021 business park update. So when we highlighted here is more that we aren't looking to restrict beyond that it cannot be take up the same amount of space or use as the principal use.
Okay. And is that different from the original use of accessory? Or it's just a typo?
I think it's just better. It's more accurately depicted in the new use.
Okay, sounds good. Councillor Hamilton, did you have another question?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I had another question about the the civic use. The which is considered one of the amenities here, and I wanted to find out if I pull the exact wording here. The applicant has agreed to secure a civic use in the southern portion of the site. So first question is, what does secure civic use of a site? Does that mean that it is will be zoned for civic use, but somebody needs to pay for it anyways? Does this mean a building being built and donated to civic group? What does secured for civic use mean?
Thank you for that question through the chair. So screen above, we've got the location of the civic uses on the oceanfront. It had contemplated three different locations for civic uses, one of which ends up being sort of the sailing center. This one was not secured in the phase development agreement, but is zoned for uses that would be considered civic in theory. The subarea plan had originally envisioned it as a theater type use, again, not secured in the phase development agreement, not explicitly secured in the zoning, but the applicant is then to fulfill the intent of the basically their land use designation here to provide a public art use of some kind. They're in conversation with Arts Squamish at this time to try to fulfill something that meets their space needs study, but also is feasible on this land in conjunction with a childcare use, which again also was not secured anywhere on the oceanfront. So um, the staff and the developer are trying to find a way to meet the desire of the plan in a way that's feasible, given the zoning and the fact that their amenity package was negotiated without it.
And just to add to that, secure probably means phase development agreement secured. So we would add it to in terms of timing and exactly what it is.
Okay, so I need to be more direct. Who's paying for the building?
Uh, through the chair, the developer is paying for the building.
Okay, thanks. And does the building get given to an organization or does the developer maintain ownership of the building?
Uh, through the chair, the developer will maintain ownership of some of the building, the space that would be dedicated to Squamish Arts or another organization. We would be, we're talking to the developer about what that would look like. They would either be below lease rates and or market rates, I'm sorry, or some kind of agreement between them, but that is still those details are forthcoming.
Okay, I think those details are reasonably important to me because they really change the viability of it for civic use. Another question in the package, we've got a map that's similar to that one, but slightly different where we've got this star. And the star that is pinpointing that civic use is on a green patch, which I assume is park. But here it's on a gray patch, which I assume is not park. Is this look the civic use land? Was that previously park or previously some other use?
Uh, thank you for that question through the chair. On the map you're referring to, it is, I believe, the zoning. It is zoned the same zone as the park, which is why it's green behind the star. It's not currently within the park. It is a private parcel owned by the developer.
Okay, so as I'm just trying to understand, so as an amenity, the developer is proposing converting a park into civic use. Is that is that the amenity that's being proposed here?
Uh, again, through the chairs, so the the zoning for the park includes the use park, but it also includes other uses. So it's the same zoning within the subarea plan. It's a different land use designation and the ownership again is with the developer as part of this other parcel. So it lies within the same zone as a park, but it's not a park technically as the park title is different than this.
So the thing is current that that land is zoned as a park, but it's not owned as a park. Is that I'm trying to understand. I'm just not understanding the details.
And so the zoning for it is block H. It includes park use as a principal use. It includes other uses such as assembly and I'm not naming the other ones off the top of my head right now. But I'm sure Mr. Villas could fill them up for us, but it has multiple different uses, including parks similar to our parks now. There are certain buildings or operations that are zoned for park, but are also zoned for hospital and or police station. So it can be zoned for multiple different uses, but it's not it's not necessarily a park.
Okay, sorry, the the map I'm looking at, this is clearly in the I zoning is that which is like the whole oceanfront park is I.
Sorry, I misspoke when I said H, but I, yes, and the name of the zone is Parks, Public Spaces and Community Facilities. It allows for a variety of uses.
So I'm confused about what now what the that description appears to accommodate the possibility of civic uses. So what are we? What's what's being provided here?
If I can just clarify one piece, the zoning for the oceanfront and the phase development agreement are not well aligned in that the zoning has a lot of uses and designations that kind of did not get secured in a phase development agreement. And so the applicants are proposing to change the zoning on block C. That's the main application. At the same time, we're trying to figure out what the intention was and and the sort of lack of detail in the phase development, phase development agreement on this part of block I. So there it's it's I know we're talking about it as it is an amenity and it is a form of amenity, but it's not it's not directly related to this rezoning of block C. So in terms of council's expectations, I just want to make sure that we're being clear that the benefits or the the kind of civic aspect of what happens of on block I might not look the same as if this was a rezoning with for sale units in place because our CAC policy essentially does not trigger any CACs associated with the market rental component. So we're through this resoning process, we're trying to have a better definition and some security around what happens on that piece of block I.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That that it really helps because one of the things what I'm trying to formulate my feedback on the amenities, which was a a request, right? So I was trying to clearly understand what the amenities are. Reminding me that the rental housing doesn't trigger a community amenity contribution is an important piece there that I was forgetting for that moment. So, okay, thank you. I think I understand that better. And that's it. Thanks. Thanks.
Councillor, are there any more questions? Okay, with that, I'll be looking for a motion. Mayor Herbert?
I think I'll move the staff recommendation. I've just been thinking about how we and I have some thoughts on how we can capture the 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 feedback and comments if it's seconded.
Seconded by councillor Anderson.
Thank you. So the the request is for feedback in three in three areas and overall, I'm supportive of this of this direction. I would say that perhaps we can address those three areas through our comments. And then if there's any discrepancy amongst those, we can see if staff requires requires clarity. So I think the the parking ratio is is appropriate, but as I said earlier, in the in the in the process, I I was, I'd like to understand the totality of what's happening there, not not just the parts that's that's changing. So I but I am supportive of this of this ratio. And with the information I that's readily available right now, but I'd like to understand that that a bit further. I think the proposed uses make makes sense to me as do as does the amenity pack amenity package. I will say that proposed uses, I appreciate the conversation, the answers today because coming in, I was having some challenges wrapped my mind around a few pieces of that, but I really appreciate the the conversation today so far. So I'm supportive of this of this direction. And I think I'd also like to commend staff's efforts to to sort of eye up some loose loose ends, maybe if you want to call it call it that of of the overall area as we as we contemplate any any changes. So finding opportunities to do that. And I'm quite excited about the addition of rental here as it was something that was that was missing. So or broadly at the the oceanfront. So yeah, thank you for the work on this. Happy to support.
Thanks, councillor French.
Thank you, Chair. I have some thoughts on all three areas. Thank you, Chair. Um, I have some thoughts on all three areas. On the, the parking, I support the ratios provided uh, in the report to council. Hopefully, the developer is committed to these ratios and I'm glad to see that we have uh, a representative of the development company here. And when I say committed, such that once it comes time to market the units in this area, all the prospective purchasers are made aware of the parking reality. This um, will be housing that's appropriate for most vehicle types and not all vehicle types. So there's real estate agents selling these units won't be doing any favors to the community by ignoring the parking needs of prospective buyers. Buyers with work trucks, um, all the major uh, truck manufacturers have been making them bigger and there is no sign they're going to turn and reverse from that anytime soon. Big SUVs are popular, Sprinter vans, they won't function well in these via, in um, these units. Unless, as we heard from Mayor Herbert a little bit earlier, there's some provision for those over height vehicles. We've seen in recent years a disconnect here and it's caused problems. We experienced it just a few weeks ago when, when the um, folks from Sea and Sky were here. Too many people downtown believe that if uh, dedicated parking spaces aren't used for um, parking, they have a right to parking spaces in the public realm. Or if the number of people living in a unit who own vehicles exceeds the number of spots assigned to the unit, that's going to be an issue. And that's where I see the initial marketing and, and sales of these units will be important. Um, as for the proposed uses, um, allowing some flexibility within a viable range of possibilities that match current needs that I expect will continue to be needs well into the future. So childcare continues to be a struggle and we see that here. Based on current trends, it sounds like childcare will be continuing to be uh, challenging for um, the next little while. And as our population grows, the demand for indoor climbing space will also increase. So I think that's an appropriate amenity at this location and with the height that is required for a gym like that. To um, my thinking, this is a great location for um, that recreational pursuit. And we, we still come out of this with some marine oriented uses as a possibility. And as for the amenity package, I don't, don't have any concerns with the details there. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks. Any other comments? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. With respect to proposed uses to start out with, uh, I see that we are left in an uncertain place. And it's not a fault of the developer, but we're left recognizing that we have been and we still are in an uncertain place with respect to locating marine light industrial. And I do hope we can get underway with studies, analysis to resolve that. With respect to parking, I, I like uh, Mayor Herbert's uh, comment uh, that he would like to understand the totality of the issue and I would like also to pass on some general concerns in that light. In, to quote the staff report, this site is well positioned to support mode shift. Well, that was probably said for waterfront landing Sea and Sky also. In fact, on the surface of it, it would seem that that site would be even better positioned to support mode shift. But it hasn't turned out that way. In September, we had a lot of unhappy experiences relating, related to us in council regarding parking dilemmas on that site. And let's not repeat them or let's keep that in mind. Um, it is exactly, my goodness, it is sixteen years ago in this room that the transport plan for that Squamish Downtown Peninsula was present. And so was I, and I remember the consultant coming back to the same point over and over again in his slideshow. And it was, the impact of future jobs where people are going to work has a huge in capital letters, impact on the transportation plan. Has an impact on car use and parking demand. So if we're going to have a bunch of commuters here, that is, there won't be local, local employment to satisfy um, or connected to the local residents. This is going to have a huge impact. So it's a lesson and I think that report from two thousand eight is still very readable. Finally, on parking, uh, there's reference to parking requirements are exceeding the downtown standard. We shouldn't forget where the downtown standard came from and it was to incentivize investment in the downtown. And to put a level playing field in place relative to the malls further north. That was the background of that standard. On the amenities, folks in the climbing community tell me that they are skeptical of the viability of a climbing facility and point to such facilities in the lower mainland. And so my recommendation is I would trust that the developer will think to build an adaptable building that could take this into account. And arts and art facilities uh, in the amenity package, I really would like to see us develop a district wide plan for cultural facilities. And this would be a benefits for developers like the developer before us here in trying to help us fill in what we need for the community as a whole. We do not have a um, a roadmap for cultural facilities and this would be of help to developers here and elsewhere. In the package, there is uh, uh, schedule H was one of the slides presented and it's in our report to council and it shows a catamol bridge. This is an old idea. It goes way back to the beginning of oceanfront planning. And we have, I just, I brought it up during the transportation master plan presentation and the two, one lane bridge that is on Third Avenue. I, I wonder whether we should revisit, take the opportunity to revisit this bridge as we consider the sub area plan and related plans. And I understand that there are options to, so that we, we may not need it. But it does have some um, issues with respect to uh, the wildlife management area and Squamish Terminal's truck route that we should take into account. That is, it gives open access to the wildlife management area, which may not be something that, may be something that we want to reconsider. There is a passing reference I notice in the uh, report to council regarding the requirement to address habitat compensation. Habitat compensation requirements on the oceanfront peninsula, specifically Catamol Slough. The Catamol Slough development works would, would be pre-compensated under the Squamish Estuary Management Plan Habitat Compensation Agreement. This Habitat Compensation Agreement, which exempts the oceanfront peninsula, exempts Site B, is part of the trade offs that were needed, compromises needed to realize the wildlife management area. We wouldn't have a wildlife management area today without those kinds of trade offs and compromises. They were tough. It took us twenty years to realize them. But the fact is, there's a Habitat Compensation Agreement in place between BCR and DFO and there are people in those agencies, Mr. Miles Jones, who could confirm this and in North Vancouver. But it is still presumably in place. The Estuary Management Plan is a document that we can't on our own tear up and put aside. It has four signatures from government agencies there. Each of those signatures, federal and provincial, come from orders in council. We can't unilaterally say that we're not going to respect that Habitat Compensation Agreement as part of that plan. So we need just, it's just a little bit of a footnote to, to keep in mind. That's all of my comments for now. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Hamilton.
Thanks very much. On the three items requested for feedback, proposed parking ratio. As I've said before, I'm in favor of removing parking minimums from our zoning at all. So any parking, I prefer, it's not that I'm not saying I don't want any parking to be available, but I think that the develop, if, if a homeowner wants to buy a house without a, a property, without a parking spot, they should be able to do so. And so anyways, uh, parking ratios, I'd be supporting. I would support no um, parking requirements. Proposed uses, I am um, somewhat reserved uh, to sort of transition more employment space to residential space and I, I recognize the, that it's not necessarily less employment space. In combination, recognizing Counselor Stoner's uh, comment about the challenge of actually implementing employee or employment related um, rental. And so for that, I would um, really like to see uh, at least some of that rental, a significant fraction of that rental be dedicated as affordable rental uh, put over to the housing society. Because uh, for, for management through the housing society, because I think that's long term, I think that's the only way that we can secure affordable rental tenure um, in, in uh, Squamish. And proposed amenity package, uh, absolutely, I'm in favor of the childcare. That's great to see. Uh, the art space, I'd like to just clearly understand um, what's currently allowed in that exact zone and, and what's being proposed there um, with specificity on who's going to be owning whatever gets built. And how it's going, or, and if it retains in the ownership of the, of the developer, how does it, how do we secure um, affordable civic use? Thanks.
Thank you. I have Counselor Stoner next.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, again, thanks to the staff and the proponents for the feedback or for the work so far. I'm generally supportive of where this is going. Despite, when I first read this, I was like a little bit disappointed. I'm not going to lie. I feel like it's a little bit of a, like, when you read what the intention was to then be like, oh, and then ten years later, we've realized that this is actually not feasible from as simple as like putting a dock in is a really challenging narrative. And so for me, I think one of the key pieces going forward, as Counselor Hamilton said, is making sure that we're articulating what if any loss of employment lands is being driven through this rezoning. And so I've heard staff say that this isn't actually a loss of employment lands. It's restructuring how those employment lines are being used and could actually generate more employment base or employee numbers per, I can't remember exactly how you measure employment space, but employees per area. Um, and so having some of that detail come back to us, I think would be really helpful, understanding what those trade offs are. I think if this just goes out and we are allowing an additional two hundred and seven residential units on site, even if they are rental, um, is challenging to do when it feels like it's at the trade off of employment space. But if that's not actually the case, then let's articulate that in, in a really clear way. Um, and that didn't come through in the staff report that I read, so that would be helpful for that to come back if we have those numbers about how many folks this space would actually be employing under the proposed uses. The proposed uses as, as presented, I think are reasonable. Um, and Ms. Fletcher, you uh, you minimize my concerns around the indoor recreation uh, component in the fitness centers. So limiting it to that specific site, I think that that is fair. Um, and really trying to drive the light industrial, high tech component here. I think um, we know that those are also needs in our community. So um, I think that that's reasonable. I think the parking ratios are also reasonable. Um, but I do have some concerns around the lack of outdoor amenity space. Um, and also here that uh, there's negotiations going on for the indoor amenity space. And if I had to pick between those two, then definitely having indoor amenity space um, is a higher priority to me, I think. Um, and then as I mentioned, kind of through my question comment earlier, I really do wonder about the feasibility of limiting this around workforce housing. Um, so the two hundred and seventy units as rental allocated to workforce housing, I just think is fraught um, for future implementation. Um, and so can we think through what it is that we're actually trying to achieve, which I think is both more rental market or rental housing as well as I think just affordable housing. And so what, what does the developer need to actually be able to deliver affordable housing on site? As opposed to kind of this in between gray area. Uh, so those would be my comments and my feedback for now, but otherwise supportive of the motion on the floor. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you. Um, a, a couple of things. The one, I just responded, my, my colleague didn't say, I don't think anything contrary to this, but I just want to make sure that my perspective is clear on this. I, I do have some hesitation still around professional reliance. And so I appreciate in general where we are providing uh, scrutiny there. I don't want to add unnecessarily or inefficient burden to things, but just want to make sure that um, yeah, we are doing our due diligence as well and I appreciate where we have done that. I think things that I would hope to see is a no gas commitment across the all uses. When I look at some of the changes in uses uh, and some of the loss in terms of marine opportunity, I think there is an opportunity to uh, incentivize and facilitate some of our core economic or target economic sectors. And I think this in part would help facilitate that. And then there's the whole climate emergency and all that sort of stuff. I think it's um, when this comes back, just understanding accessible versus adaptable units. Um, I'm really trying to put my mind to actual accessible units more. And I know there's additional work coming on that, but understanding where we are there and hopefully moving the needle on that. The, the uses piece, and this goes back to my previous comment, uh, I do appreciate um, sort of making sure we're carving out some uh, real space for, for light industrial. Again, I think there's some opportunity to focus that to target areas. Uh, at the same time, want to provide flexibility for this to be successful. So I sort of appreciate the balance we're trying to hold there in terms of trying not to be too prescriptive, but make sure we're preserving light industrial and I, I hope we can keep doing that balance. To my colleague's comment though, I, I think it really is important and it'll be important for me to understand that the employment rating matches the housing, because if we're adding housing and the, the people can't get work nearby, then it is just housing for commuters. And then the parking becomes a problem and it's a problem after problem. So we want to make sure that the housing and employment, I think, are aligned. And with that in place, I think I can be supportive of the parking. I, like my colleague, I, I would sort of support less. I think we have served the market very well that, that wants lots of vehicles and it's um, serving the market and, and providing a bit less competition for the people who are willing to do the mode shift that we, we say we, we need and who will avoid adding new traffic, which then is a problem for everyone who wants to keep their car. I, I think, you know, um, I can live with the balance here. I would be willing to push further, but I, I think this is a reasonable balance. I agree with my colleague's concerns or hesitation around trying to achieve the workforce housing. How we might do that, I, I think is um, important and, and so maybe just simply below market is a better option. Uh, and, and I guess the one comment I will make and you know, to the degree that it's the same developer that ends up executing this, we've seen actually quite uh, inspiring things in terms of uh, culture and uh, culture especially on, on that site, which gives me comfort in terms of some of the arts and culture civic uses we're talking about. Of course, we don't know with the rezoning, who, you know, could change hands. And so we want to have some sort of protection in there, but if this proceeds with the current developer, I, I think I'm a bit more comfortable with what we're talking about here. So um, yeah, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have any other comments?
Okay, seeing none, I have a couple of my own. For once, I am in favor of reducing the parking in large part because I'm concerned about the car access to this parcel of land through our downtown core. And I, and also I think this would be a really interesting area to explore less car reliant housing. I hope the developer is considering space for some sort of grocery facility out there to help reduce dependency on vehicles for groceries. I want to put a plug in for the inclusion of some information slash education around marine law, marine life and equipment house sound to be included in some potential amenity. Otherwise, I'm supportive of the amenity package and of the proposed usages. Though I'm not a huge fan of the alcoholic beverage manufacturing usage, just as I'd prefer to see non-alcoholic centric facilities in place. I hear more and more people transitioning from effectively alcohol as a recreational uh, as a recreational activity and more and more people looking to do something that's not alcohol focused. So that's just thought that. I'd like to amplify some of the comments from Counselor Stoner about the trade offs and that these changes may have on the employment space. Uh, and the, and the comments about the outdoor amenity space and also Counselor Penningill's comments about the no gas covenants. Does that, is that enough feedback for staff? Is there two, you, you have comments? Okay, Counselor French?
As I was listening to my colleagues, I realized my use of phrases, real estate agent and sales don't quite fit in this scenario. So substitute that with rental managers. Need to be conscious of what people are driving and how many vehicles they have before they commit to a rental agreement.
All right, fair. Does that, uh, is that sufficient feedback for staff? Are there? All right, fair. Does that, uh, is that sufficient feedback for staff? Are there enough cats to herd there?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, so with that, I will call to question all in favor. That passes unanimously. Um, are we looking for a motion to terminate? I'm going, Counselor Hamilton. Second, what? Well, oh, I'm so, I'm going Seamus to second. Yeah, rescind. Uh, yeah, um, yeah. All in favor? Thank you very much.